Good evening, everyone. Like to call to order regular meeting of council Monday, August twelfth, twenty nineteen. Um, before we move to one point one, uh, Mr. Wall, did you want to introduce our new employee?
Yeah, I'd like to introduce. Mister Dan Passani, who's going to be our director of recreation and facilities. So we're very lucky to get Mister Passani in from Georgina in Ontario. He brings a lot of experience to. Uh, the district here. He was formerly the director of public works and facilities. So he actually ran the public works department as well as maintaining the facilities in Georgina. And some of his strengths are in asset management, which is something we're really looking to get into, especially regarding our buildings in the next. The next few years, as well as large uh, project or large capital project management, which is important as well as we look to do some additions on to our. Very happy to have him. He's been here for almost a week now. And uh, like anytime you get a new employee in, there's been a lot of information going. One direction and they're starting to come back this way too. So that's always a promising sign.
Good. Welcome, Dan, and uh, welcome to Tumblr Ridge. Okay, uh, moving on to one point one, public hearing zoning amendment bylaw number six, seven, nine, twenty nineteen. So we are hereby giving this opportunity for those persons who consider they are affected by the District of Tumblr Ridge zoning amendment bylaw. Number six, seven, nine, two thousand nineteen. The proposed amended bylaw includes language that defines the permitted position that a fence may be placed on a consolidated lot. Language to include gasoline service stations, convenience stores associated with gasoline service stations. And car washes in a C one zone. In addition of excluding food preparation services or similar to the definition of small scale home based sales. Language that excludes regular or semi regular food and beverage businesses from the permitted home occupation list. And language to correct the maximum accessory building height and note the limitation for R one and C three. Where it hasn't been defined before. Anyone who believes they may be affected by the proposed bylaw will be heard at this time. No one will be discouraged or prevented from making his or her views heard. However, it is important that you restrict your remarks to matters contained in the proposed bylaw. When speaking, please commence your remarks by clearly stating your name and address. After this public hearing is concluded, council may without further notice, give whatever effect council believes proper. To the representations made at this hearing. I'd like to open it up to anyone with any comment in regards to this. Doesn't appear to be anyone. So I'll begin the closing statement. Before closing this hearing, I'm going to call three times for any further speakers on any of the matters contained in the proposed bylaws. For the first time, is there anyone who wishes to make any further representations? For the second time, is there anyone who wishes to make any further representations? And for the third time, is there anyone who wishes to make any further representations? There being no further speakers, I declare this public hearing closed. Okay, moving on to approval of the agenda, recommendation please. Counselor Majinsky.
That the council approves. August twelfth, twenty nineteen agenda.
Secondaire, Counselor Norbury, all in favor? Carry, thank you. Adoption of the minutes, July twenty second, twenty nineteen, special council meeting minutes, recommendation please. Counselor Norbury.
That the Monday, July twenty second, twenty nineteen, special council meeting minutes be adopted as presented.
Secondaire, Counselor Lehman, all in favor? Oppose, carry. Uh, business arising from the minutes, Counsel How?
On page nineteen of the agenda, uh, twenty nineteen, twenty dash seventeen. On there eight point three, it's the unbooked ice usage. It was moved and seconded that unused ice time be made available to the general public when the community centers open, provided they have assigned. A waiver at the front desk and hold a valid arena facility pass. I just have a question back to staff of is. This way I understand it correct that we are going to develop some type of a policy? For how this ice time will be given out as compared to individual people that would want to use it. Group bookings, birthdays, or minor hockey. Users like that. What's the plan? How are we going to do that? So that we're not giving the ice away for one person for two dollar fifty cent?
Compared to a, a booking?
That's right.
Yeah.
Who, who gets priority over that booking?
Mister Wall?
So the way it's gonna be. The way it's envisioned is that's gonna be used similar to a drop in outdoor style. Um, this isn't something that you can utilize though if you're just looking. Two fifty dollar drop in pass, you have to get the actual facility pass. So I think the shortest facility pass we offer is the one month pass. Uh, so you have to have that type of facility pass in order to. Use this. And if the ice is being unused or unbooked, it's just drop it, come in and use it. Uh, if somebody wants to book the ice, people are going to have to. Uh, leave. So the staff will come down and say, listen, the ice isn't booked. You're going to have to remove yourself. We have to develop the rules that are going to be in place on this. Uh, one of the challenges we have in this is. So a group of people show up and they only want to use it to skate around with maybe young children. And some, you know, you get a group of uh, five or ten hockey players that want to come and use hockey. So we're going to try and figure out how we're going to balance those needs. But as far as balancing the need between paid patrons and unpaid patrons, it's the paid patrons who will come first. And how we're going to balance in between unpaid patrons, uh, is going to take some finessing and probably some tweaking after it's implemented. So. Uh, we don't intend to bring a policy back to council similar to the way we don't bring policies on the rules of public skating or public swimming. Uh, we're just going to have to try and work and evolve with the community and get feedback from the people who are using it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any business arising from the minute staff? Nope, okay. Uh, moving on. Sorry, Counsel How, did that get your question answered there? Okay. Uh, proclamations, five point one, health week proclamation request. Doctor Ife and Mrs. Snyder request to request that September seventh to September fourteenth be proclaimed to our health week. So I'd like to. Uh, at this moment, I hereby proclaim that September seventh to fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, be health week in Tumblr Ridge. Great idea, great initiative, and um, looking forward to it. Thank you. And thank you, Counselor Norbury, for uh, for uh, bringing this up through the Building Healthy Communities Committee. Okay, moving to delegations and petitions, six point one. Tumblr Ridge Community Forest, Duncan McKeller, KPMG and board members to present to mayor and council. Welcome. Yeah, it's just. Oh, no, no. It's okay. That's okay. Good evening, gentlemen. Good to see you. Hi Duncan.
Thanks for the invite. We uh, apologize for not coming for council sooner. It's been, it's been here a year and a half or so.
It feels like it.
We probably uh, should have a presentation. Both the community forest and uh, some accomplishments and what we're up to. Put together a dozen slides so it goes through fairly quickly and have questions, I guess. I don't know how you want to format it. And then we were just going to discuss some of the resolution that came up in the last meeting. There were some concerns. So next slide, please. Was that me? So I just want to talk about the overall objectives of community forest for those that might not know what.
One more.
What uh, ours are. Every community forest has different ones. If you're in a watershed, it might be different or uh. Any watershed or, you know, park or something, but. Uh, we have a vision and mission there that predominantly talk about. A forestry as being the primary driver in economic development and using those funds to go back into the community. Uh, just so you know, for our vision and mission, we went to mission this year, uh, the AGM for. BCCFA and we came second runner up for uh, award of excellence in community forest.
Excellent.
A little bit on our structure, so for folks that don't know how it happened and what, how it got developed. So in two thousand eleven. Uh, of, the district was awarded the license for community forest, twenty thousand meters. And we had to form an organizational structure to run that, run the organization. So they formed a um, a, a group there, a volunteer group, and they came up under Mister Kincaid. I was part of that group back then. And they determined the group intended corporation was the best structure for, for Tumblr Ridge. So they formed a board of directors and then there's seven members on the board. One of which has to be the mayor or the designate of the mayor next, Chris. They had hired a forest manager and they hired a bookkeeper, who hired a bookkeeper, so. And all operational activities for most part are contracted out. We don't have staff. So a bit on the role of the board, similar to what uh, you folks do for the district, I suppose. It's more of a governing uh, position. They provide me with leadership and direction and what to do. They set the organizational functioning piece. They do government, the governance piece. They look after the best interests of the organization. They su- uh, ensure the financial viability of the organization. And have some knowledge of the stakeholders so they can meet their interests and needs. And those are the seven directors on the board at the moment. Some of the stuff that I do as operations person. Uh, implementing sort of business management concepts and forest management pieces. So I don't, I'm not just a forester doing, running around looking after growing trees. Uh, look for log, the best log markets, um. You know, getting all the legal documents together. Uh, all the planning, the policies, operational policies. Consultation with First Nations and others, stakeholders. Um, contracting out the field work. On the business side, corporate structure, we look at that, what's the best structure for us periodically. Manage the board of directors replacement. Document record keeping management, looking at the mapping system, policies and corporation procedures. So they, those of you who are newer, uh. Uh, a little bit of stats, the history, we're initially nineteen thousand eight hundred and so hectares. Size. Approved again in two thousand eleven. Corporation was formed in two thousand and twelve legally. That was the legal date it was done. Uh, we developed management policies. We have eight right now. Hired me, hired a bookkeeper. They, we have a really good mapping system that manages all our activities on the, in the ground. Uh, we harvested, first harvest was two thousand thirteen. And in two thousand sixteen, we approved the expansion. Uh, to thirty five thousand meters a year. I think it's thirty five five actually, but thirty five thousand meters a year from twenty thousand. And just this June this year, they finally approved the area to uh, to uh. Produce that amount of volume on a continuing basis. Interestingly enough, because we were twenty and now we're thirty five five. It's interesting to see that the expansion area is bigger than the existing area. And only supporting, if you do the math, fifteen thousand five hundred. Rational for that is that we took in a lot of areas of a problem forest type swamps. Um, old growth management areas. And those will help you in the long run because it makes your area bigger. You control more of the land base even though it's not growing commercial trees. This days, they, they ain't age of commercial trees. So I think we did a good job of picking the area. It's also very contiguous now. Show you a map quickly, you know what it looks like. Because we're an area based tender, we have to do our own forest inventory. We don't rely on the government's inventory. It's very, very old. It's twenty years old. So we continuously spending some dollars getting good forest inventory and good LiDAR system as well. LiDAR is a. System that looks at the landforms. It gets really good data on the landforms for those that don't know. I can't see those numbers from where you are, but just wanted to show you a bit on our cut controller, how much we've harvested in those uh, half dozen years or so. So two thousand thirteen, around thirty six thousand. Two thousand fourteen, seventy two thousand. Two thousand fifteen, a hundred and thirty six thousand. Sixteen, thirty three thousand. Seventeen, two thousand, two thousand eighteen, twenty six thousand. And this year we're planning on twenty thousand. Now, of course, if you do the math, there's way over twenty thousand what you're allowed, but we had two uplifts. One of three hundred thousand roughly, and another sixty or eighty to liquidate the dead pine trees. That's produced some number, some uh. Money for us as well, which is great. Trees planted were just a little over two million trees as we sit. End of two thousand eighteen, we're one point eight. Nine million trees and planted a hundred and ninety two thousand this spring. And next year, we're only going to plant ninety two thousand because we didn't harvest as much. There's a map, uh. Still difficult to see. Can't, I don't know if this pointer works. Um, anyways, that's the, the black line is the shape of the old area. The area in the south, or the bottom of the screen, uh, is straight lines. That's the straight piece of highway where the airport is. And where uh, uh, the mine road goes in there. So they were in contiguous pieces. So the dotted black line is now the, the expansion area. So it's all pulling it all together. Tumblr Ridge is sort of still hard to see, but it looks like where all the squiggly lines are there. I got another image of it there in, from uh, Google. You can see how big it's become now. So you control a lot of area around your community, except for the. Would that be the southwest? That's the TFL of Canfor. So it's a nice contiguous area, close to, all close to Tumblr Ridge for the most part. And it's not, like many community forests are all broken up and it's more difficult to manage. Imagine if you couldn't do any sort of flying reconnaissance or anything. You're in your area, you're continually in your area, and you're only out of it for. There's only one piece that's not contiguous now. Um, just a, one or two things on local effort. This is last fall, last winter. Just behind the industrial area there, there's a lot of, I tried to sell the wood for pulp as well. There's a lot of dead trees that saw me wouldn't pick and. Last man, the Forest Service allowed us to take some wood, firewood. So we took a whole bunch down to uh. Local farm there and piled it up there for the seniors. And I guess local groups deliver that as required by. The Lions Club or whatever looked after that. So it's great. And uh, we also did some sending there. The highlights of two thousand eighteen. Um, grants, the fork numbers and, and projects. Two hundred forty one thousand dollars in grants went to the community. I'm not going to read every one of those, um, but certainly trying to do things that the community comes to us. We. Encourage grants, we encourage uh, community support to come to us. We have a process where we vet those. Uh, through our policies and uh, award, most of the ones that come get awarded. A few uh, do not fit the criteria there. Something like, we don't support, for example, buying chainsaws like uh. For one person, you know, this is a business, we want it to be spread around more people, more people that uh, helps the better. Little bit on the numbers. We're looking pretty good because of those, some of those larger harvest levels. Um, so we've got some pretty good numbers as far as equity goes. We're still climbing in equity this year. It's gone down a little bit. I'll show you that in a minute, minute, but uh. We are sitting reasonable. Um, this is sort of a graphic of uh, assets and total equity. So our total assets are in the blue and the equities in the orange. So it's continually climbing up and uh, this is also. Net numbers after we've spent over six hundred thousand dollars in uh, community support and grants to the community. Um, it's going, it's gone down in two thousand nineteen a bit because we have not harvested yet in two thousand nineteen and we spent some money. Doing the inventories and the planting and so on. But it, it will go back up. We're just debating whether, when to harvest because of the markets are so terrible right now. We could hold on to the wood and sell it perhaps next year. So we're trying to play the markets a little bit. We don't lose that wood. We have four or five years to, to sell it, so. No big hurry. You don't lose that. We'll harvest it this year. Um, this is kind of a schematic. Tumblr Ridge is in the bottom yellow bit there. Showing the, the high uh, wildfire threat areas that we work with, with the community. Uh, we've probably managed all, all that we can now. Um, they're either in the golf course, they're down to Steep Hill in the golf course. There's a woodlot now somewhere else. They're not in our area of, of control. This is one, a shot of late, or pre two thousand eighteen of the highway in the gravel pit. Town in the background there. There's a picture of what it looks like now, uh, select harvested, trying to get rid of the fuels. And that uh, that volume of wood, that was where a lot of the cat, uh, catfire wood came from and also made some significant dollars for us too. Here's another picture of it. And third one in the ground. Um, yeah, I got this out of uh, the Globe of Mail, I think it was. Uh, we're doing some research as well. We've been approached by uh. The Forest Service and the UBC to do some research around wildfire management. They were here with our conference a couple of years ago and saw that some of the unique um, planning we were doing, the. Treatments, I guess. And so they're putting plots around, they've got forty five plots. Around the community forest that they put in the summer. Uh, measuring various things. And what they want to see over time is how these treatments are. Uh, affecting wildfire behavior. Among other things, what they looked like before. They've got a history of uh, imagery back, going back to nineteen forty or fifty. And they're doing a bunch of different projects. So it's just going to grow on itself. They do two or three plots a day, so they're also here spending money and doing some work in the community. So that's great. And lastly, um, they haven't got it live yet, but we built a, a website. That will have a lot of information on for everybody, including council. We'll have our policies there, news and events, uh, forestry documents, meeting agendas, moments, financial. Results, monthly financial results, uh. Business opportunity. Also have all the businesses, the people that were local that we have hired over the, over the past. And are on our list to look forward once we've done. Some interactive maps you can hit on and some contact information feedback loops you can send to us. That's, that's what we've been up to, um. And I don't know if you want to talk about the financial stuff now or you want to wait till we leave the agenda?
Yeah, um, yeah, I'd, I'd kind of like to. Uh, go over the financial a little bit there. Um, I know last meeting we had a few questions in regards to why. Uh, twenty seventeen reports were coming back uh, at this point, so. Um, maybe if you could clarify that and then also if you could clarify, um, the reasoning. This is coming before council, um, that would be appreciated too.
So. Uh, the community forest is a, it's only a separate entity. So when we go out and do the audit, we get financial statements approved by their board, which uh, Chris is on, on account, on the board. Uh, so that gets approved and before it actually gets to. Your financial statement, the district's financial statements, it, all those numbers are approved and flow into that and then we audit those numbers. So. We uh, provide you the draft financial statements. All those correct numbers are in there. Uh, so really, we just need from the councils just approval of the financial statements for the district. Not approval for uh, the community forest financial statements because the board is taking responsibility of those. Um, that being said, there are like legal obligations required with the, the register and. Having a corporation legally that you need to then accept those um. Those financial statements, but they're not, not technically approval of those financials, just accepting those financial statements. So I think that. Acceptance portion was missed, but that's not, it's not really a, an audit side. That's really governance of the community forest board.
Right, okay.
I can add to that. We, you know, I could take some of the heat for dropping the ball a bit. We, we, I'll tell you what we're going to do now to make sure this doesn't happen again. So two thousand seventeen was a bit of a transition year for the community forest. Uh, the directors leaving. Directors getting replaced and directors, the number of directors expanding from five to seven. All happening in two thousand seventeen. Now, one thing I didn't know about was you can't change the number of directors mid, mid season. You can only do that at an AGM. What I told you that a few months ago. So we made that error. So we tried to add them and they, they didn't have the authority of directors for. So it kind of screwed up the, this resolution to council about accepting the number of directors. We kind of waited on that, waited on that and then it came late and then the finances came in as well with that because it says you have to accept the financial. Two thousand eighteen comes around, so we're asking for that approval as well because that happens in May or so. So we thought, why not talk to you about that now as well? Two thousand eighteen finances, but. As we're going forward, what we're going to do is when Ben and the team comes up, talks to you guys about your financial pieces, we, we want to be, have ours all. Our drafts done and then get approved by our board. From, you know, get Ben's uh, statements approved by our board, then our board would sit in a meeting with you guys to answer questions.
At the same time, yeah. Yeah, perfect. Um, I just wanted to mention, uh, Duncan, I really appreciate the, all that you've done for the community forest. I think you're doing a fabulous job. It's uh, it shows in the numbers and um, District Tumblr Ridge appreciates your uh, your service there. Counsel, any questions for the community forest? Counselor How?
So I, Duncan, I've, I've kind of. Uh, talked to Chris about this a little bit. You may have heard this come through as well, but uh. This is in regard to the financial statements where it talks about the community forest is responsible for seven hundred five thousand dollars in silviculture at the end of two thousand seventeen. Can you give us any idea what the, what it is now? So correct me if I'm wrong, that means that we're responsible to plant or, or, or do that modern work for reforestation?
Right, um. We do, I need to have.
So at twenty eighteen, because that's, you're asking, you have the twenty seventeen financial statement, so I think. Sixteen, seventeen. So the twenty eighteen, which I have in front of me, is sitting at approximately eight hundred thousand dollars. So it's gone up another fifty thousand.
Okay, so what's, what's the plan with that? How does that work though? Do you want to do that every year or?
So.
Why is that racking up?
So what happens is every time you harvest a block, you have an accountability or liability, right? So the government says. Uh, you have to track that liability. So as soon as you knock down, let's say, twenty hectares. Um, we calculate to how much we know, how much it's going to get to free to grow or a tree that's fifteen feet tall. We know how much it's going to cost per hectare. So let's just use a round number, a thousand dollars. Thousand dollars times twenty. Uh, hectares is twenty thousand dollars. As soon as we knock down one tree, we put twenty thousand dollars in what we call the silviculture accrual. That takes fifteen years to wear off the books. Because you, you gotta, it takes a year to plant a tree or to grow a tree, then you got to do a survey, then you got to do. Other survey, you might have to brush and so on. So you spend money in that fifteen year period. Then near the fifteen year period, somewhere along twelve to fifteen years. You do a final survey, says free to grow. And that means all your obligations are gone from that block. And then you give it the obligations back to the government. So the reason it's growing is because we're still, we have, we're not been, it'll start to go down. Well, it's going for a couple of reasons. One, we're getting larger, so we're harvesting more. Secondly, we haven't hit year fifteen yet. So once year fif- fifteen hits, the number for that, those old blocks will go to zero.
Okay.
We do have a fancy spreadsheet that I can go over with you. It shows every block and all the obligations on every block. So we planted four or five blocks this year. There are obligations on those blocks for that activity planting, say twenty thousand dollars for that block. Soon as we plant, plant it, we take that obligation off.
Okay.
And we, it's kept separately in these reports. Uh, what the, what our obligations are. Like you said, like the accrual right now, well, this is seventeen, but around eight hundred thousand. It just fluctuates every time we. Do the work on the block and take the obligations away.
Okay.
And it goes up when we harvest.
It's showing the liability from the harvest, correct?
Harvest and, and then all the silviculture, what, uh, work that reduces the life.
Right.
Fluctuating, anytime you do an activity.
Right, okay. Counselor How?
Uh, what administration oversight or council inclusions do you guys have for uh, spending uh, the grant money? Or are you sharing grant money?
I'm not sure, I, as I said, I accept to say to refer to the, to the, to the policy of grants. They do have criteria in there that uh, talk about, like I said, you can't, we don't fund.
Single people.
Capital for companies, that sort of thing. They also look at uh, if someone comes to us with a, and I don't believe this, I'm just.
Fair enough.
It's, it's, it's kind of, it's the directors. Things like uh, they think, for example, I've seen in the past where. A medical thing might come that they think that should be paid by the product. Give that rationale. But every time there's a decision made, it's all written back to the person that applied for it and gives them right. Want more information or that doesn't fit the criteria. Please read the grant criteria.
So just to counsel, something that's been a concern of mine for quite some time is that there is no oversight, the way I understand it at this point. Uh, between the community forest, which the District of Tumblr Ridge taxpayers own, and this council. So to me, I don't quite understand how the community forest is able to spend money without. Going through administration at all or going through us to say what they're approving grants with.
As far as, as far as I understand, the reason for that is because uh, they're their own separate corporation with their own board. Is that correct?
Yes, and there are others that do it differently, like Mission. We were just at Mission and they're one of the oldest community forests in the province. They have, I guess, a department. Little run under Jordan or somebody that looks after their community forest. But that's a structure you could have. There are a few that did, not many do that. Most of them are structured like we are. Um, there are other ways to be involved as a member or to counsel through Chris. Or you can come to a meeting, they discuss grants, it'll be on the agenda. There are ways to get involved.
Is that um you said the department under administration C E O, is that still operating as a separate corporation then?
No, no.
It's operating under the district.
Department of the municipality, three via corporation and three via uh not-for-profit, I think, is the three major structures that we looked at back in two thousand eleven. I don't know if there's more than that, but predominant numbers of problems are running like a corporation, there is other reasons as well as uh. We have corporate team that moves up a bit legally from the organization's loyalty as well, or is that our responsibility as well, so.
Yep.
And we also have liability insurance for directors. So they can stay safe too.
Yep, for sure.
Uh Mayor, I do, something I didn't want to point out, when you look at the uh the the uh. You know, grants that have gone through to different groups, those are the same groups that used to show up at grant gate time at the council meetings looking for. I think you don't see that a lot anymore, so it's going directly to the people that counsel through taxpayers' dollars. Used to go direct, that was tax money.
That's right.
This is profits from a corporation that taxpayers no longer pay for that, that's from the corporation. And and you know what, I know there's a little bit of you can juggle that around saying.
Oh, I I absolutely agree with you, uh the community forest has taken a lot of the the grant and aid um from the district, uh most definitely. Uh I was asked recently if if we have a community foundation set up and and I said, no, we don't, but to be honest, um our community forest is really acting like a foundation for us. Um yeah, no, it's it's uh it's it's been a very good venture, in my opinion, any other questions, counselors?
Just a little bit of the gray area that we run into is is Duncan kind of mentioned a little bit about it, is some some things, the medical. Uh that that should be really covered by by the province and Northern Health, and so we have bought some equipment for the for the them. And really, there's an argument to me that that's not really what we should be doing and 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 that's where that's where we run into the uh real hardship and we have. We debate that pretty seriously, which should be or shouldn't be, but the bottom line was, and it seems like the thing that wins it all the time is is it good, first off, does the clinic need it? And are they gonna get it, chances are not, and does that benefit the residents of Tumblr Ridge? Equipment that we have bought, we are totally satisfied that we wouldn't have gotten it and it does benefit to our residents.
Definitely. Counselor Hall?
Yeah, so if I could just finish what I was going on with here, um so so there are some instances where the community forest supports initiatives that the district of Tumblr Ridge turns down. So that is my concern where and nobody's been able to explain this to me better than uh the way I understand it, the taxpayers own. The community forest, it's owned by the district of Tumblr Ridge, so the money that comes through there is the taxpayers of Tumblr Ridge's money, it doesn't belong to the community forest to spend. At the end of the day, the taxpayers of Tumblr Ridge own the community forest, correct? No, that's the way I see it, I and then until somebody can explain it to me a little bit better, I don't understand why there's no oversight. I'm not saying that they put money towards wrong things or that their decisions aren't correct, I just think that there should be some collaboration before they go and spend money that belongs to district taxpayers. With us, we have to, we have to answer for every dollar we spend, we have to have collaboration, we have to have our meetings recorded so everybody knows exactly what we're talking about. Then an example of it is the ten thousand dollars that the community forest put towards the trails in behind the uh horse stables, you know? We didn't know that was coming, yes, they may have talked about it at their meeting, but it was not brought to us at council. And we have now decided that we want to try to purchase that, so that ten thousand dollars, in my mind, could be a waste. Another initiative is the uh cultural and First Nation thing that we uh denied and the community forest approved. So if somebody doesn't get it approved here, then they can go to the community forest and approve it somewhere else, so to me, I don't know how council feels, but I think there should be some oversight. I think there should be before the money, if they come in and they say, here's the four or five things we want to spend the money on, do you guys have any issues with it, we say, no, they move on, they spend the money. Just some amount of oversight should be there, and I I just, to me, I've never understood from day one why it's like that.
Mister Wall, can you elaborate on the corporate structure of the community forest?
I think it's the, I don't know if I could explain it more than the way it's been said there, an arms-length corporation. Um you know, where the debate gets into, is the community for forced owned by the residents of Tumblr Ridge? I would say no, in the same way that the residents of Tumblr Ridge don't own the district of Tumblr Ridge, we are an entity of the provincial government, the provincial government owns us. Uh we are a service provider, we are, we are set up to provide services on behalf of the provincial government. For which the provincial government has deemed best administered through a local level, so. If the district of Tumblr Ridge was to ever fold for any reason, the value of our assets in a fire sale would not go to the residents of Tumblr Ridge, it would go to the provincial government. Provincial government owns the assets of the district. So that would be maybe a way to look at that is, do the taxpayers of the district of Tumblr Ridge own the profits and the community forest, no, the province owns all of it.
I've got a couple of questions here, Duncan, what what equipment do does a community forest own, do we have any equipment or have you bought any equipment?
Uh very basic equipment, uh. Fire pump, like a little hand pump in my back back in the pickup, things like that.
But nothing like heavy equipment at all. And the assets, the assets that were listed in the in the reports there, is that the trees?
Uh that's the, I think that's just money, isn't it? It's dollars, it's assets, yeah.
So just depending on which report, so you're talking about the.
There was um. Yeah.
So the assets on the financial statements, there's cash of three point four million dollars and creeping expenses of thirty five hundred dollars is really the only asset sitting on the.
Okay, so no, no equipment, okay, and um you had mentioned a little bit about the market, um I think we all know the. The forest market is definitely in turmoil at the moment, um. I don't believe this is correct, but correct me if I'm wrong, does the partnership agreement as far as the caribou go affect our community forest boundaries? Did you have a look at that auditorium?
Down by. But with Core Lodge touches the mine road, when you go in eight kilometers, there's a little piece past that road that the caribou are, we can't go into. There's not much volume there, anyway, we harvested a block in there a couple of years ago. So.
Okay.
No, no timber impact. We, when we modeled to get to the expansion area, that was one, they did have some other areas, but they've since changed those, so that's to our advantage now because those aren't there and.
Okay.
Constraint before.
Good, good choice then, any other questions, counselors? Counselor Kalka?
Yeah, so I just have a couple, and it's on page eighty three of our agenda, I'm not sure if you have a try and answer the Tumblr's community forest court, so it's in regards to your budgets. And your actual, so you have an other of thirteen thousand dollars of nothing in twenty sixteen to thirteen grand, twenty seventeen spent?
Um twenty seventeen, I think I know what you're saying.
I have this page eighty three of my.
Yeah, so you're talking about.
Page two on yours, I think.
Statement evidence.
Thirteen thousand, nice, that's that one.
Nothing in twenty sixteen.
Yeah, so and I can explain what that is, it's it's related to a G S T error, so we flowed the error through twenty seventeen because it wasn't material.
So when, like I know when when you guys do R G always have. Right, so the mechanic is when we go through our agendas, it's really nice to think there's no notation marked there.
A note on the financial statements, uh like on the financial statements, that's not a significant, I guess, we would have to disclose it in the financial statements. But when it's presented to the council or then yes, it should be discussed in that meeting.
Okay, so so my concern is, I get this is an agenda from my from staff.
Right.
To 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 say that we're gonna accept.
Yeah.
We don't have a delegation that night, and then I have these kind of questions, that's to me where maybe, I mean, I'm not trying to tell. Your calendar did job, but even if it's a board puts a note that it was a miscalculation and then we don't have to have a board come back and spend time with the delegation.
We're gonna be in front of you before this, when with this comes out, and so you can ask all the questions you want, so you have to answer them at that time, makes more sense to get it earlier.
Sure.
So for example, for that twenty seventeen fifteen thousand dollars, I would have been, I have to go back and take a look, but an audit of a statement. So we would have actually had to bring it to the board and have them know where it is, um and they would have to sign off on it, saying it's fine to flow it through. Um and then that should eventually move it move to council too, if uh you want that in detail.
That information.
I mean, not to put our counselor over on on the spot, he was at a meeting, I was asking those questions and even himself, right, so. I mean, he goes to a lot of meetings and kind of be expected to ask those other questions, there's always. He'll have the same question about line rate about office in general, forty two thousand dollars.
Yeah, and that's related to the conference, the community forest conference that was put on and held in the in the Tumblr Ridge in twenty seventeen, it was about uh. Yeah, it came out to forty two thousand, slightly less than forty two thousand.
So I understand where Mister Wall's coming to to his his side of that. That the province owns us, I get that, I think we all know that, you know, we were up for, helped them out. But at this point, we actually, the community forest is just owned by the district, there's the taxpayer, not right now, so this is the district. Is that not correct? It is the district, but I say it's owned by the taxpayer because obviously they don't own the town building, they just pay taxes, right? So I guess I'm I'm in the same spot as Counselor Al, I guess counsel's opinion, do we want input when to us, I mean, I know they have a board and we've approved their board, there's. Members are not being paid, they volunteer a ton of time. But when they're making decisions on huge amounts of money, they give up the grants, we turn the item down and then they go there and they get the money from them. And that's happened before the the high school, same thing came before us, looking for money for for helping with the feeding. Uh the students down there, we turned it down as a council and community forest. So I'm curious, I know Counselor Aubrey sits there, maybe that should come back as an overview to us and and then he takes back the direction from our council.
Counselor Aubrey?
So firstly, to address like this, this money that's in the community forest is obtained through an industry, right, like the community forest as a corporation goes out. Does logging interest and gets money that way, so I don't think it's fair to say that, you know, um that it's owned by the district, so council has to own it, you know, there's a board of directors to provide oversight. For these grants and operations now, um. And I think the benefit, the community does gain an immense benefit in in that all the proceeds from these um interests go directly into the into the community, right? Hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, now, if we're gonna cherry pick one of, you know, fifteen grants in twenty eighteen that the council at the time. Disagreed with, yet maybe new information came up from other sources, that board of oversight still had to look at the merit of that grant and it had to go through the same grant request that. That council has to go through as well, so, I mean, I I'm not understanding why, there's there's concerns about the, and Mister Wall um. Asked this in the Q and A in one part of the agenda, in that if we have issues with how um the directors are managing, what we can do is that we can. Um as the directors are appointed, we can have our opinion at that point, so, you know, if Counselor Kalka feels that this person's alignment isn't in. Opinions isn't aligned with his, he can voice his opinion at that point, but this point, you know, we have um a group of directors and if the if the district is looking for um input on. Potential partnerships, ways that the community forest can assist in um furthering council objectives, you know, I'm that uh, I can be that point. And um I would love to work with council on where we can fit in into um projects moving forward, but, you know, if you're looking at the grants, every one of these is. Organizations that they're within, they're within the community and, you know. Doing, we're doing a great job at the point.
I agree, Counselor Maginski?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand, um I think we should put more um trust in their own board, I think we should be overseeing what they're doing and how they're. Approving applications because their application process is quite stringent, it'll say in them, how are you going to directly affect the community? And so they they weigh that pretty heavily, just because they are part of the community, they put in a lot of emphasis on that, um.
Is there any questions for our delegation by chance?
Oh, sorry, um I think the way that you guys do that, the process is um. Just as good as if not better than what we do here, they're they're very similar in how you put them out, because even on there, uh the Tumblr Ridge Mountain王Biking Association wasn't even posted on there. Uh that you did a process, applied for that and it's just like the Peace River Regional District, you could apply through them. And then the same user group could go and apply through the city of Dawson Creek or Fort St. John or Tumblr Ridge, so, because we're all part of that, so. I think it's just the boards have to have the differentiation there.
Okay, any other questions for delegation, counsel? Counselor Hall?
Just when are we gonna have this conversation again with council?
We can certainly bring this up at a P and P, I would think it'd be appropriate.
Okay.
Thank you very much for coming in, gentlemen, I appreciate it. Okay, moving on to six point two, South Peace Health Services Society, Balteres Community House, South Peace Health Services Society requesting support. To the Balteres Community House project, welcome.
Thank you, you're welcome. I made it, I had a long council day myself, but thanks to my trusty chauffeur, I I got here, so. Um thank you for having me, those of you that don't know me, my name is Shaila Wilbur and I am the president of South Peace Health Services Society. And I'm happy to say we have um Counselor Norbury sits on our board, however, he is a volunteer, so I want something, a very clear message that we're giving out to everyone. Is that we have held an A G M, we have changed our bylaws constitution and no member of our board is appointed by any community or area director. Uh within the P R R D, so thank you, Chris, he volunteers his time and um we appreciate that and we also wanted to ensure that nobody on our board was ever put in conflict of interest with. The council, so that's my number one points that I would like to make. Um so I have brought some paper for you, one um is hot off the presses, our operational business plan, um. I don't, it it is our plan and so don't take too in-depth to to what's in there, but we wanted you to know what we looked at, how we've structured uh running the Bolterace House and and uh. The framework and our foundation of that, we're new, this is going to change as we are opening our doors and we're in the process of running the facility, but we did want everyone to have the information. The other piece I brought is what we are giving out to any potential um donors, and so if you know somebody in your community, you can help create. You know, make sure they they get a donation back to us, so very glad you all asked. So I will tell you that, uh I guess it would have been the seventh of August, uh we did um have our board together with our foundation. Uh foundational finance partners and that would be the P R R D, area D and area E directors, uh the Lakeview Credit Union. Um unfortunately, Doig and Soto weren't able to make it, but um they are also financial contributors to this project. Uh so the Lakeview Credit Union uh actually gave a short-term borrowing, they're paying the interest for a year on that loan. With an expectant of one payment uh this year from the board towards the purchase of that property. And I will add to that, the Dr. Bolterace's um estate sold us the property for less than what he put into renovations when he purchased the property. So people have been very kind to us getting to where we are and we made that purchase in December of two thousand eighteen. Since then, uh we have um been working very diligently, we have a lot of subcommittees and most recently, uh we have come uh into contract with. Uh C Chandler Construction, so Celtic Homes, and they will be doing the renovations on our project. They're very excited and gung ho and and sometimes we're lucky that uh we actually have Bruce, my husband here, who's with me on our construction committee, because he. Gets to take care of the very enthusiastic people from Celtic Homes and the board doesn't have to, they're very enthusiastic. Um so if you turn to the back page of that shorter presentation, this is kind of the footprint that we have on our property. Um and so these come by way of Ashley Arve, who has been a part of our project from day one and she is our architect, tech- technical. Construction engineer and she has donated every single minute of her time and she is committed to do some help. So uh we, everything. So what this picture will show you is kind of um our existing residence, so as the house sits today. And what we'll be doing is we are going to be adding on, I'm going to say to the back, so the top of the page. I'm not good with left and right, it's a female and that's just how it is, so. We're adding on two fully accessible rooms, so whether you have minor mobility issues right through to maybe you're quadriplegic and you're in our area. You will have a place to stay and they will have a shared accessible washroom, so we're very proud of that, um just the main structure of the house is kind of a split level and how we were going to have accessibility. Uh was quite a conversation for us, so this was something that we came up with, Ashley uh put that aspect in and it's gonna work very well, so that's in addition. So that's an addition to the house. As well, um, to the front, closest to Thirteenth Street, we're adding on, uh, there's a carport there right now. We call it the lean two and it's coming off. And uh, we are adding on space there, which will be our reception area, check in for people staying at the house as well as another family room. So we will have two family rooms within uh the facility. One will be more of a, I'm gonna call it tranquil, silent place to read, nice fireplace. No TV, no electronics, just a quiet place to be and to rest. Where the other room that's in this new addition will allow for uh families and children who might be a little bit more noisier. If you wanna watch TV, maybe, you know, we'll have some games or something in there for them. So to give both spaces to uh recognizing clients of all demographics that are still. And then the other addition, also close to Thirteenth Street, um, and the alley is a carriage house. So this carriage house will have two bedrooms, shared kitchen, living space. Um, and this will be used uh for locums, specialists, maybe nurses coming in to work at the hospital or to work with the doctors. And the reason that we have them separate um from the original plan is we're all human. And if you're there for medical reasons and you're not feeling well, you're likely to go knock on the doctor's door that's in the room next to you. So we're separating them. It's there. Uh, priority will be given to patients first. So, um, the city of Dawson Creek is very proud that we're home to the facility, but it's not for our community. It's for Tumblr Ridge and Chatwind and Hudson Hope and Fort Nelson and Puscoopy and Doig River and and everyone around us, but it's a central location. So we're proud to say that we're going to be the home of the Boltrace House, but we really recognize who's going to use the house. Um, the other change will be to the parking lot. Uh, you can see a little white truck there and some grass, that's all coming out. There will be a parking stall for every room as well as the carriage house. And the entrance and exits, we're adding an entrance and exit to Thirteenth Street. And it's been designed so that the VC Northern Health Bus can actually pull into our parking lot, drop off people or pick them up and then pull out and uh be a quick transition and close to the accessibility entrance. Um, so the house well, um, with the addition on the front, will be fully accessible. So we will have a um handicap door, push button. Um, so all of those aspects are being thought of um within the house. So that's kind of the the lay of the land as we have it. Um, within our business plan, uh, we are looking at uh currently um employment of five people. Three part time to full time. So we do recognize that the board is not going to run the Boltrace Community House. And so we will have to find somebody who can be a manager or an administrator of that. And that's in the business plan. As well in the business plan is being culturally sensitive. And so we've had lots of conversations with our First Nation neighbors. And then we also recognize within all of our communities, we have other cultures that are here. So for Dawson Creek, we have a large Filipino community, so I'll use that as an example. But we all have that. And so we don't want anyone coming to the Boltrace Community House to not feel at home. So we're gonna do our due diligence through however our makeup of staff is to make sure that we cover that off. Um, as well, uh, we are going to utilize volunteers, so we may shift in that three part time positions on how that works. What has been decided through the operational business plan is we're never going to close. We will be open over Christmas. We will be open over holidays. It's twenty four seven. And the reason for that is, yes, people come because they have appointments already in place, but emergencies happen. So we recognize that there could be a car accident and somebody could be in the Dawson Creek Hospital, but they have a spouse that is now has nowhere to go, is in a different community. So, um, we've tried to cover everything. There's probably things that we haven't and we need to look at, but we're doing our very best uh to make sure we're inclusive. Um, with that, I I, that's kind of our little update and, you know, and I do, I wish I'd gotten out here earlier. But I will tell you, this ball has moved so fast. The society was created, we purchased property in December with the very tight line timeline that Celtic Homes has given us. They planned to hand the keys over to us in December of two thousand nineteen. That's one year from purchase and we expect to have the doors open in February. With that, I'm sure you may have questions and.
Thanks for coming in, Shaili. Um, my only question or uh just confirmation, what what's the goal for the charge per night of the Balteries House?
Oh, absolutely. I'm sorry. So, the board decided with our operational planning committee, it's twenty dollars a night. So, if you're you, everyone usually has caretaker, our rooms will be set up for two people. Um, so you have your spouse, your mother, sister, whoever's coming with you, they would pay ten dollars. So that flat rate means six hundred dollars a month. So I will tell you right now that um an expectant mother from Fort Nelson is paying fifteen hundred dollars a month for accommodations. She's expected to be there two to three months in advance of delivery date, um, as well as food, transportation. It's not cheap.
Going broke, having
Going broke, still paying fees at home. Um, so, and I I will add, Bruce, I just mentioned, thank you. The uh, we're one block from the Dawson Creek Hospital, so very, very close. And I don't know if everybody's toured um the property or not, but um we're always open to that. Tour anybody that wants to go through it. We have to schedule it a little bit now that we're fenced in, but um we can there. So yeah, it'll be six hundred dollars a month. Uh, we've also already formed partnerships with landlords uh in the community. For example, we have a mother coming uh later in September expecting twins. Um, and so we won't be open, but the community has gone out and um we have formed a partnership and then it is part of our operational plan and they will only be charging that family uh the seven hundred dollars. So the spouse um is coming as well. And so the difference being, we will give them a receipt uh for the difference as a donation to our society.
Perfect.
Good.
Yeah, no, this is an amazing uh initiative. Uh, thank you very much for spearheading this. And um, yeah, it's it's fantastic. Counselor Kalka.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. When you guys first started up, it was appointed from council, like, sure that was enough.
So originally, yes, the city of Dawson Creek applied for rural dividend funding to form the society. And then the partners were Tumblr Ridge, Chatwind, Puscoopy, Area D and Area E. I said Chatwind? Um, so we were formed and in order to form that society, each community and area appointed somebody to be um a liaison and form the board. Um, since then, uh, recognizing that we are now going through the process of becoming a charitable organization. So we can issue tax receipts. And recognizing that though some people that were appointed were from the communities, no problem. But some were appointed from councils and that put all of us in a conflict of interest. And also eliminated the ability for those communities then to vote at the regional district level for funding. So, um, in talking to our legal counsel, um, and VC societies, we realized we need to have an AGM. We need to elect ourselves. Um, and so we've done that um moving all of the other things we hope to have.
Counselor Kalka.
Hey, if I can't hear Mr. Wall, you may go on the outside, so we don't need to go to Mr. Wall, that'd be fine. You know what our contribution is?
Um, so currently, I don't think Tumblr Ridge um has financially contributed to the project. And um, that's fine, because we haven't asked for it. We are asking for some stuff, that's based on that. So we do have an ask in front of you right now and that is for uh written support and a resolution saying that I think we've asked for fifteen hours of staff time to help us with leaflets for the community. We recognize you know your community best, so you know how we can uh branch out and let your community know who we are doing. Um, as well as just uh commitment that you're going to see the project through to um finish. So that we can um include you as a partner in our application for rural dividend funding. We can apply for up to five hundred thousand dollars, but we're only applying for two hundred and fifty. And that is because we've applied for capital gaming grants as well as we um can apply for some tourism funding because of our accessibility rooms and some funding through Rick Hansen Foundation for accreditation. Um, so what I will tell you is we have presented to Puscoopy. Um, Chatwind will present to in September. So the other thing that I think that we would like council to have on its mind moving forward into your next budget cycle, we don't expect our municipalities or area directors to dump a big wad of cash in our lap. It's not realistic. But what we do ask is that you keep us in mind and you look at what would you like to contribute to the project? And how can you fit that into increments each year in your budget? So maybe, you know, you will say, we're gonna donate fifty thousand dollars, we're gonna give you five over ten years. So, you know how to work it into your budget, so we're not, we're not letting you get off the hook and not asking you for nothing. But you know your budget's best and you know your community's best. So we do want you to keep us in mind for your next budget cycle and when that time comes, you you definitely will see us again and see that request. But for now, we're on a deadline for that rural dividend funding and so that's our request today, is that support. And I know it's a specific resolution and I know some of my emails were coming back, but yet you guys were answering, so I don't know if you're still getting them.
Yeah.
Um, we can provide you with the wording, should council approve um our request.
Okay. Counselor Kalka.
So just finish, but I want to appreciate for all for all your information, because I thought the previous council, we have to contribute some funds if we haven't. I know myself, when it comes out the budget, I imagine our staff will capture that this comes forward in the budget. This council, Norbury, we bring it for, we'll definitely see support from my side in regards to that, because I used to work for VC, I was here in town, I know how many people had to go to Dawson and ended up having to stay where they're supposed to have to stay for the next morning or whatever. So hats off to the organization and how you guys went about it, but I think you could definitely get support from this community.
Thank you so very much.
Absolutely. Counselor Lehman.
I'm, thank you, Mayor. Um, just looking at this, you expect this will cost above three hundred thousand dollars a year to run?
I'm estimating. So, uh, the whole point is, um, it's assisted housing. That's what, that's what we're providing. We are going to constantly be in a state of fundraising for operational. We understand that. However, though this is a base plan, the board is really looking at what is our volunteer base within the community so that we're not necessarily paying out wages for five people. We've already had people come forward and say, I want to volunteer for this. What do I need to do? So, uh, very similar to Quarterman House and Prince George, Mama Doll House, Mr. Seal House. They do have volunteers that come in and work during the day. Um, but we did recognize it's unrealistic maybe to ask someone to be there for a night shift um on a volunteer basis. So that would be a paid part time position. We're gonna utilize volunteers wherever we can. Um, and we also recognize in creating the job descriptions, there's multi layers that one person can do uh within eight hours as say the paid manager or administrator of the facility. So there's other things, they're not going to be just sitting at a desk for eight hours and we're gonna hand them a chair. So, within um our next steps is where we're at now for a board, is coming up with that job description. What do we need from this person or multiple people? And how can we fit it into maybe one or two versus five? So, there are ways for us to cut expenses. Um, I know we just had conversations and passed on a package to uh Peace Energy Corp. So what does it look like within our renovations for solar power? Is there an opportunity there for us across? So, we're moving very, very quickly. Um, I know it's a big number, but we're chewing it down as as much as we can. And I will tell you, there's not an opportunity where there's money that that rock is not getting turned over. We're asking.
Well, it's it's definitely a valid request. It's it's a phenomenal project. Counselor Norbury.
Um, so, still can't like to make a comment.
Of course.
I know I use up a lot of my comment time, so. Um, so, you know, I'd like to make a comment, Shaili, when you you talk, thank you for coming in. You talked a lot about the board doing this and I'd like to point out like the sheer amount of work that Shaili herself has been putting in. She has been the the running back, the quarterback, you know, everything for this project. And I'm I'm blown away by the amount of effort that you've put in to get this moving in. The this project wouldn't be as far along as it is without, you know, you overseeing and being the president of this organization. Um, now that being said, um, within the the letter request that um the South Peace Health Services Society has um given us, there is a request that um we provide fifteen hours of administrative assistant assistance to prepare engagement leaflets, information for our community, and a letter of support for her application to the rural dividend grant. Um, now that is time sensitive. Um, so, I know our usual procedure is that we don't approve any um requests when there is a representative in the room. Um, but this is time sensitive needing by the end of, you know, the the business day and two, the fourteenth, so that's actually Wednesday. So, in thi- in this
I believe we can add it to new business with unanimous uh vote, is that correct? So we can do that after the delegation. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll wait till after the delegation.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much for coming in, Shaili. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. I know it's a little convenient. Um, I know you have a love TR program and I was able to get funding from the PRRD, so I dropped off four food cyclers for your community champion to use within your community as draws. Value is five hundred dollars, so there's extra filters, buckets and food cyclers, so.
Perfect.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Perfect.
Excellent.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Um, so before we have the recommendation, I'd like to, or actually, let's run it this way. We'll adopt the um consent agenda for information, but we do have the option to uh discuss any of the items within the agenda after the motion. So, recommendation on consent agenda, please. Counselor Norbury.
That council adopts all items in the August twelfth, twenty nineteen consent agenda for information.
Seconder, Counselor Kalka. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Would anyone like to bring anything up for discussion? Counselor Norbury.
Um, I'd like to bring up uh seven point seven, the Saddle Club in Kind request.
Okay, uh, motion to discuss. Correct?
Yes.
Seconder, Counselor Kirby, all in favor? Carrie. Counselor Norbury.
Yeah, so so with this, um, I want to make a recommendation um, from from this letter. Um, and that I recommend that we provide in kind support for the setup and takedown of six porta pikes for the um August twenty third, twenty fourth and twenty fifth show.
Okay, Counselor Kalka seconds, open for discussion. Counselor Kalka.
I'm just curious if it also, if it's for that many days that they're getting the back truck on. Something wrong there.
I would assume.
With six.
I would definitely assume, so, uh.
We need to make an amendment that we add that if you need, I'm not sure how to do that. We just hope they end that up, that, or is that not something normal staff would do? If they get filled, that they would be able to call.
Mister
An emotion is escaping here.
Mr. Wall.
We would probably do a review, very, for council if you want, that would be good, because this uh is likely gonna be over a weekend and I'm guessing
Counselor Kalka.
Just make a motion that we uh approve funds to Mr. Wall if if needed to uh
Amendment to the motion?
Amendment to the motion.
Yes. No.
Amendment to the motion that we had authorized Mr. Wall to use that truck, or whatever, whatever way he needs to.
The, yeah. Jane, do you have that?
Thank you. I didn't know what I was gonna say something. Say different terminology is
Seconder for the amendment. Counselor Maginski. Any discussion? Okay, called a question on the amendment, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Called a question on the amended motion? All in favor of the amended motion? Carrie, thank you. Okay, um. I would like to motion for seven point four, BC Oil and Gas Commission to open for discussion. Seconder, Counselor Kalka. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. So I just wanted to ask uh council if anyone would be interested in volunteering for this position? No interest? Okay, I will, uh, sorry.
I just don't know how much time I have, that's the only problem.
They're talking about a monthly meeting, I believe. Was it quarterly? Okay, if if no one's interested, I'll follow up with them and see if we can get some kind of a summary report. I'll follow up with you on that then. Okay. Any other items, Counselor Kalka?
Seven point one.
Uh
Peace River Regional District.
Motion to discuss, seconder, Counselor Norbury, all in favor? Opposed, carried, Counselor Kalka.
I think make a recommendation that we ask staff to follow up and come back with a report in regards to exactly what they're saying here in regards to the land use uh not paying or contributing to not be participating in it.
Okay, seconder. Counselor Lehman, any discussion? Counselor Kalka.
So the reason I'm asking for that staff report is in previous councils that came in as a delegation, uh late on the fourth year, it's believe in September. Brad Spelling was in in the gallery as a delegation. They talked about the same scenario. But the scenario he talked about, when he talked about us opting out, is we would lose our vote on everything. We would still be able to go to the P R R D meetings, but not have a vote. And I'm scared if we, you know, nobody brought the sport to the most for, but I'm scared if we opt out that we do that. So I like the information to burn the. We're dealing opting out of the uh permanence and stuff like that in regards to land.
Yep, Counselor Norbury.
Now, is this something we need a staff report on?
I believe so. I it uh caught me by surprise and I don't have all the answers to it. I did uh reach out to area director E. Today to get a bit of clarification on it and um it does appear to be beneficial. For us, um but some more information would definitely be appreciated. To to have a better informed decision. Okay, uh we need to call it Counselor Majinsky.
Sorry, Mayor Bertrand, thank you. Um so are you saying that the land use issues um do pertain to us? In.
So in in this situation, um the the electoral area directors are. Um questioning the validity of um a member community voting for land use planning. Um a long ways away from them. Um it was suggested possibly that we. Uh come up with a um a land use planning committee in regards to our geopark boundaries. I think anything land use within our geopark or our council would definitely be um considered important. But um I think this is giving us the option if we want to. Um be involved in land use planning within the entire regional district. Or do we want to focus in on our surrounding area? Counselor Majinsky.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I was just curious because uh we could probably spend the money elsewhere if we were just to do it within our geopark instead of. In the surrounding area because we have such a huge land base that it might be worth our time maybe just putting it back into our area instead of.
Yeah, yeah. I think the staff report would definitely be uh beneficial. So call the question on the motion. All in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, moving on. Uh new business, Counselor Norbury, did you want to make a motion? Counselor Norbury?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that, oh, let me go back to the. About six point two here. Um I'd like to add an item to the new business. Uh recommendation that the District of Tumblr Ridge provides fifteen hours of administrative assistance to help the South Peace Health Services Society. Prepare engagement leaflets and information for your community and a letter of support for their application.
Okay, so that motion would be after uh our vote on whether or not we add this to new business. So. We're we're gonna, I'll get a seconder for the addition and then we'll move on to the the motion there. Seconder, Counselor Kirby, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, carried. Okay, Counselor Norbury? Counselor Kalka.
I'm just wondering why we're 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 marking, are we marking at nine point one and moving the everything down or?
Sure, yeah. Counselor Norbury.
All right then, as the new nine point one, I'll make the recommendation that the District of Tumblr Ridge provide fifteen hours of administrative assistance to help. The health peace, the South Peace Health Services Society, prepare an engagement leaf, prepare engagement leaflets. And information for our community and a letter of support for their application.
Seconder, Counselor Majinsky, any discussion? Counselor Howe?
Just through to Mister Wall, what would that cost us and we have staff in.
Okay, Mister Wall.
I believe the staff support isn't on a tight timeline. It could come at a later date. The letter is just requested now. The cost would be. I don't think this would go outside of our normal working hours. We can fit it in, but you just multiply fifteen through the wage rate of the person who's doing it.
Okay.
And then whatever material costs.
Counselor Kalka, did you have a question?
The same question we had the staff to go do that. But I thought maybe that was time sensitive too. It just seemed like. Even a fifteen hour thing seemed time sensitive. That's why it was all in one.
Okay, Counselor Norbury?
I I apologize. It was all kind of grouped into one. The only um the part that is time sensitive is the um. A letter of support in which um Shirley has prepared. She just needs um, wants to sign off on it. She's part of a. Many other municipalities she's reporting with the same uh same letters of support.
For the grant application?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, called a question. All in favor of the motion? Opposed, carried, thank you. Uh okay, nine point one and a half. T R Health Week, a report from Counselor Norbury dated August twelfth twenty nineteen for recommendations from the Building Healthy Community Committee. Recommendation, please, Counselor Norbury.
That as per the recommendation of the Building Healthy Communities Committee, council approves the proposed budget for T R Health Week. And that as per recommendation of the Building Health, Building Healthy Communities Committee, council donates a six-month gym pool ice facilities pass as an early bird. Early bird registration prize for the T R Alliance Health Fair.
Seconder, Counselor Majinsky, open for discussion. Counselor Kalka.
Yeah, so just curious regards to the budget, is that the budgeted funds within the the uh society, the group's uh. Budget that we approved and what's up? Or is this over those budget and is that unbudgeted funds?
Uh Counselor Norbury.
Well, I'll take, I'll go two steps there. I wasn't aware that there was any budget provided to the Building Healthy Communities Committee. Um I believe that was for staff time. Um so this would be unbudgeted funds.
Counselor Norbury.
And if I I can speak to that, the the budget that came from this was um from. Hope, I guess it wasn't there.
Last year's, wasn't it?
It isn't included on there on the report from the Lions last year. All all of this comes from from that report of the costs. Except that with the, this year, we're looking at expecting double the participants. Um and uh, yeah, I mean. If it's okay, I can go into um what the Health Week entails. I think I did an okay job on the issue, but.
No, I think I think we've got a pretty good idea uh as far as the report goes. Any other, Counselor Kalka?
So I just wonder when we say that budgeted funds are in regards to the recommendations I put on the floor, it says. Proposed budget, we need to add in there unbudgeted funds for, or is that that?
For the twenty nineteen budget?
For for the, they're asking for the budget to be approved, that's considered in in the report, like five thousand dollars. Plus six months, silly fast, which I'm not sure is in that total as well.
I don't believe so.
So are we, do we need to say unbudgeted funds as itself again, unless Mister Wall has budgeted funds that.
Yeah, I think.
Has this in his own budget, I'm not sure.
I think uh it, when it says proposed budget, it it's talking about the budget in this report. But that those funds would become unbudgeted funds in our budget because we didn't budget for them. That's a lot of budgets. Does that answer your question?
So should we be, so when this one's passed, we make another recommendation of using fun budget, funds in the amount of five thousand plus whatever the. Silly faster because of silly fast, it's for us, we don't have to worry about.
Counselor Norbury?
Um I I'll be prepared to make an amendment that um we we write, we we word the um.
Motion?
The motion to say the, a council approves the unbudgeted proposed budget for the T R Health Week.
I like it. Not bad. Seconder for the amendment? Counselor Kalka, all in favor of the amended motion? Opposed, carried. Called a question on the amended motion, all in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you. Nine point two and a half Vestal Grounds, a report from the Chief Administrative Officer dated August twelfth twenty nineteen to provide direction to Vestas. As per the lease agreement on how the laydown area should be reclaimed. Recommendation, please, Counselor Kalka.
The council requests Vesta to return the laydown to grass except buildings online in the festival's design as attached to this report.
Seconder, Counselor Lehman, open for discussion? Counselor Kalka.
Yeah, so I was in to talk to Mister Wall. I just wanted to kind of, so that I didn't, I didn't send out an email that was laying into it. So this isn't actually the drawing that we may or may not use for it. It's just. The idea that's, it could be the area that we use for stages and stuff or whatever is decided in the time the council comes up with.
This was just an example of the, a map of the area. Okay, Counselor Howe?
So just so I'm clear what we're doing there, we're gonna leave the fence in place. We're gonna strip up all the gravel. We're gonna lay down sod. And then lay down seed. Is that what is happening?
Uh.
Is that what the agreement is?
I believe topsoil and seed or.
Return the overburden. Um I think it's, they might even leave the crush down there, just return the overburden on top of the crush and then seed it, yes.
So topsoil and seed, not a sod?
I just, I want to be clear on what we're, what the motion is here. There are other areas here that we have thought uh things were supposed to go a certain way and they didn't. So I want to be sure that. Fence is staying and we're removing the gravel before we put the overburden down. Our old overburden and then put the grass on top of it.
Yeah, I, is it, Mister Wall, is it up to Vestas to leave the gravel or take the gravel off?
Whatever council wishes. This would be to just leave the crush and put the overburden on top of it, provides that first stable piece. For, but you don't have to, we can have them remove the the crush and and uh put it back. With no crush underneath, something.
Yeah, up to council, I believe. Counselor Howe?
I would just make the suggestion that we return it the way that it was. We don't know what we're doing with it now. Don't leave the crush underneath because it'll be an expense for us later on down the road. We've got to remove the crush. So if they want to remove the crush and if they want to, whatever, pile it up on the side over. That's fine too, or they want to haul it away, whatever they want to do. I don't care what they do with it, but just put it back to the way that it was. We don't know what we're doing with it. We may be costed with putting it back to the way that it was, so.
But that's.
Make the decision by now, so put it back the way it was.
I think that's what the motion is, is.
Saying it's gonna leave the gravel there and then we'll put the overburden on top of the gravel. That's not the way that it was.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So I'm saying, remove, strip the gravel, put the overburden back down and put sod down, leave the fence. What happens if the electrical? I just want to know what's happening.
As far as. Yep, and that was part of one of your questions beforehand too. So the electrical work that's been done there is is getting left, correct? Yeah.
It could be removed, but um having electrical services extended to where they are, it's a lot cheaper to just take them out later if we want to. Rather than take them out in great extent.
Sure. And the fence is staying?
Fence will stay.
Okay, Counselor Norbury?
So I um I'll speak to the support of this motion. Um I do recognize what Counselor Howe is saying. I think that's a great um. Great suggestion and I would like for staff to try and work out an agreement between organizations that um they remove the crush. But uh ultimately, um I would like to see that it um grasp be put into that area for future considerations. Um.
Okay. Any other discussion? So I think we can deal with this recommendation on the floor and then. Uh Counselor Howe, if you'd like to make a another motion in regards to the gravel, coun- uh Mister Wall?
Yeah, I just wanted to make it clear to council that they, we don't need to negotiate with Vestas on this. This is whatever council says you want it to be. It will be. It's part of the lease. It's part of what they've agreed to. So you don't need to worry about, um well, maybe they'll accept it, maybe they won't. They have to do, but you asked them on this, so.
Okay, uh Counselor Kirby?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Um in in the diagram shown, is the fencing uh out there right now as to the diagram? Or is there additional fencing being put in?
There's no.
Mister Wall.
Okay, so this is all that's there as at the moment. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Howe, is that uh reasonable if?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted something clear that we're voting. That's what I want. We've had this come before council before. In particular with H D Mining and their housing project that we thought things were going to be put back a certain way. And they weren't because we weren't clear on it. So all I'm asking for is clarity.
Okay.
Are we removing the gravel and then putting the overburden back down and then grass? And if Mister Wall has to get back to us. With the way Vestas plans on doing it and and say this is what they're going to do or we're good with it, I'm fine with that too. We just need the clarity of of what we're agreeing to.
Yep, I I think this recommendation is fairly clear and I think after this uh it gets dealt with, I'll I'll make another motion to remove the gravel prior. Uh any other comment on the recommendation? Okay, called a question on the motion. All in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you. So I'd like to make a recommendation in regards to um this laydown area that. Vestas pulls the um gravel base uh before. The overburden is laid down. Seconder, Counselor Majinsky? Uh open for discussion, Counselor Norbury?
Um I I do have a question because honestly, this isn't my wheelhouse. Um now, it's not that I'm against it, but. Can anyone enlighten me to the um the dangers of keeping that crush would be? Is it? Is it because like the the grass might not take or what?
It's possibility. Uh there's many different uses um for that area. It was recreational to begin with, so. Um. I would think, you know, a great, a grass base on on a gravel base isn't ob- obviously the best. The the more soil you have underneath the grass is definitely uh um beneficial. Counselor Kalka.
Yeah, I kind of same aspect. So I am not a grass expert. When I dig out my grass, my lawn is swinging, you know, well. Two and a half inches thick of dirt. Seen a fairly good lawn in front of that. My thing is, is if we need to grow, we may apply back the burden that they take off, whether that's a. Six inches or inches, I'm not sure. It was there, I'm not sure if staff knows that. And reseed that to grass, that should hold. Now, the reason I like the idea that this gravel may be left there, one for drainage purposes, did we get heavy rains? Second of all, if this design ever changed, like right now I see it, it's great, but you know, I don't think we've had that sit down to say what we maybe want. All of a sudden then, we open up something different and all all the town has to do, a contractor go in, is peel back whatever overburden they put in there in the grass. By thirty feet, by twenty, whatever we need, and the gravel's already there. That's my only concern about removing the gravel. Another, there's a cost for it back in, and I see Counselor Howe's comments. Well, it could be costly if we want to remove for something we need to do. I don't.
Good points. Counselor Howe?
But we're dealing with hypotheticals. We've had this in front of us for over a year. We knew that this could come. We knew it was getting to a point where we had to make a decision on it. So my thought is, is if we haven't come to the decision as a council what we're doing with this place, return it back to the way that it was. That's what we got it as. Turn it back to that. If we made the wrong call on that, but we've got to suffer those consequences because we didn't make the decision last year.
Yeah, no, I think our our uh previous decision to to bring it back back to grass is is uh.
They may even leave the gravel there for us to use, who knows? They may truck it away, but.
It's possible. Counselor Kirby?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Do we have to specify whether we want seed or sod?
Uh that is definitely something we could specify. Um there is advantages to sod for sure. Also disadvantages, oh, Counselor Kirby?
I think, I like the uh the idea of sod because then that's that area is usable right away. Following season, just an idea, what, maybe quicker than grass growing here, I.
Definitely.
Just a thought.
Definitely increases the cost for sure. Counselor Howe?
And that's why I take on with it, it would definitely increase the cost, but uh Counselor Kirby is right, it'd make the the final product way better. And but then we gotta maintain it while getting to the point where it's gonna stay for the whole summer, have that next summer, obviously. That's, that would be, I I would be surprised if Vestas would come in and say, yeah, we'll lay sod for you. I would be pretty surprised to do that. Maybe they would.
Uh Mister Wall?
Yeah, I would say that would have to go to negotiation with Vestas. They had agreed to bring sod and they had agreed to return it back to the original state.
Okay, okay, Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Yeah, I think. Uh Mister Wall has a good, has a good point. If we put it back the way it was, it was dirt and grass seed, so. I mean, if if we go and put sod in, there's no way we're gonna be able to.
Maintain it.
Maintain it at what it was or what it's intended to be. So I think we have to be happy with putting it back to the way it was. And then that's the end of it.
It's a very big bonus to have the fence on it as well, so. Counselor Norbury?
So yeah, speaking to the motion on the floor about the gravel or not, um you know, I think Counselor Kalka makes a good point. In that, um you know, if if our grass can can grow, you know, in three inches of soil. Um if we're asking to remove the crush that would have to be put in again afterwards anyway, potentially, you know, losing money where we can. And in five years, ten years, you know, the next council, our current council might have to make that decision. And in five years, ten years, you know, the next council, our current council might have to make that decision and take it out, um, put it back in, you know, so. If, if we, my desire is end of, end goal, grass. Now, if we can do that and also plan for potential change in the future by keeping the gravel there, I'd prefer to keep it.
Okay. Any other comments? Council Majinsky?
If you stripped the gravel off, it'll be easier to reuse, uh, if you're gonna try to peel back soil and that, this could be a mess. You're gonna have to sift it, so. Strip the gravel out, sod or overburden, sorry, seed. Have that gravel next door, we can utilize it for whatever down the road. So then at least it's all there piled up, you can truck it in, move it in place where you need to, done.
Yeah, there's no guarantees that uh, be able to recover gravel from Vestas, but. Any other comments? Okay, called a question, all in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you. Nine point three and a half, request for proposal for professional external audit services, a report from Director Finance dated August twelfth, twenty nineteen. To seek approval of a request for proposals from interested firms for the provision of professional external audit services. For the fiscal years twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one. Recommendation please, Councilor Howe?
Council approves the issue over a request for proposal for professional external audit services.
Seconder, Council Kalka, any discussion? Okay, called a question, all in favor? Carried, thank you. Nine point four and a half, commercial solid waste bins, a report from the Director of Operations and Infrastructure dated August twelfth. Twenty nineteen to propose that council discuss the purchase of solid waste bins during twenty twenty budget deliberations. Recommendation please, Council Lehman?
Council approves seventy thousand dollars of unbudgeted capital funds to purchase six new HL-six commercial solid waste bins.
Seconder, Council Kalka, any discussion? Councilor Howe?
Yeah, I'd just like to point out in the report here, uh, it was well done, there was lots of stuff in there, good information of how much this costs, the taxpayers. A good breakdown of how long it'll take us to pay for the bins. Uh, I've discussed this with some uh, uh. Business owners that think the costs of the bins are too much and after reviewing the information that's in this, I disagree with their, their take on that. Uh, I'm surprised that we picked the bins up twice a week though, that, that's something I wasn't aware of. Uh, some I thought sent a report twice, twice in the report.
I thought it did, yeah.
Twice a week, but uh, surprised that we pick it up that often for them, that, that's a fairly good deal for a business owner, so.
Yeah, I agree. And, and I definitely agree the, the report was excellent. Um, yeah. Okay, any other comments? Council Norbury?
I made a quick comment and I think this is a, a, a great um, way to support our local businesses in that um, we're stockpiling these bins in case there is a need in the community, so.
Okay. Call. Excuse me. Called a question on the motion, all in favor? Carried, thank you. Thanks, Bernie. Nine point five and a half, final consideration of development variance permit application, forty-eight Secunka Place. Report from the Director of Protective Services dated August twelfth, twenty nineteen. To provide council with the information and feedback received from notices sent out to neighboring owners and tenants of forty-eight Secunka Place as per the development variance process. Recommendation please, Council Kalka?
Council approves the development variance of applications submitted by David and Sandra Furlong of forty-eights Secunka Place.
Seconder? Council Lehman, open for discussion? Councilor Howe?
So I had sent through some uh, questions to Mr. Wall today and I just wanted to review a few things with council here, I don't know if you've also had a chance to see that email, it was late in the day there. So um. I just wanted to be known that this doesn't mean that the building and the pad and the area is a, is a done deal. Uh, we still need to have the, the business, or sorry, the uh, building inspector check out lot uh, clearances and position of the building. Building materials, the concrete pad, if there has to be anything removed for overburden, the way I understand it, there's gonna be nothing touched in the, in the bank behind there. Where there was some concerns about water issues. Uh, so this really is uh, just the next step in the phase to say that we are willing to approve it, right? I just want to make sure that people know that there's still the oversight of the building inspector here as well.
As well as, yeah, the, the, the following of the bylaws and the other rules as well, absolutely. Council Norbury?
So I'm against this, this variance permit and in that, the um, you know, we're, we're going outside of our um. Our current policy by a substantial amount and, and I, I, I think. That when you're looking at aesthetics in our community, that having a. Garage that is larger than a person's house, um, I, I, I'm against that. And I think in our current, I'd like to look, I think we should bring this up for a policy discussion in that. Um, currently it's, you have up to thirty-three percent of your parcel size and in that case, um, we're, we're starting to amalgamate lots and that. That thirty-three percent becomes much bigger and we're looking at double the size of a person's house and um. I, I appreciate that these individuals want to put a gar, garage on their property and I support that. In this case, I believe it's, it's too much.
Okay. Council Kirby?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand, I have to echo Councilor Norbury's um, comments here. I think that if we are gonna be seeing frequent requests for variances to this section of the bylaw, then we should look at the bylaw first. Um, I don't see a special circumstance on this, on this area, so. Other than just being a garage, I think I will be voting in the negative as well.
Okay. Council Kalka?
Yeah, I'll be supporting the motion and the reason I'll support it is, that's the idea of the variance permits and, you know, I was at a. At a seminar on Sunday and it actually spoke to the reason why we have variances to our, to our bylaws or, or the government permits and stuff like that. This is a one-off, I mean, it's not like we see, see residents in every day looking for different sizes of grubs and blah, blah, blah. The point I'll make is staff sent out nineteen registered letters, had delivered a letter, eleven of those letters to owners, tenants, or whatever in this report. And they only received one letter back and it was the neighbor directly beside the, the residents in support. Of this being allowed by council, so I will fully be supporting the recommendation.
Okay. Councilor Howe?
And uh, Councilor Norbury makes the point to say we're, we're going outside policy, well, we've got a policy to approve this for you. So that's not our normal policy to, it's one term deferred, so to say we're going outside policy, yeah, I don't know about that. Um, this is something that has been requested from me many, 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 many times in Tumbler Ridge. People wanting a garage, I wanted a garage bigger than twenty-four by twenty-six and I was stuck with the size that was there. Uh, I think that this person has come forward, they've put the work in, they've done the legwork, it's not all done for them, like I said previously. But uh, I think it's high time that we do this in Tumbler Ridge. I don't know why for thirty-five years we never allowed a garage bigger than twenty-four by twenty-six. And when we have a variance permit, the guy brings it in, he's dotted his i's, crossed his t's, we've looked at it, there is no building ever gonna be built behind his house, there's never gonna be a home built behind his place. That's gonna obstruct the view, the current neighbors are fine with it, they know what that will do, either increase or decrease their property values, they're fine with that right now. I, I, I don't see why we should say no to allowing somebody to try something different where he wants to, maybe it'll increase his property value, maybe it decreases it. I, I think it's uh, it's high time that this was done, I also agree with Councilor Kirby that we should have looked at this policy and changed this a long time ago. We've never, ever been able to do it, we've talked about it for four years since I've been on council, we've just never been able to do it. So if this is the only way that we can do it is through a developments permit variance, perfect, at least, at least the residents know they can actually do it if this one goes through.
Yep, yeah, and I think in the, in the, or I, I believe um, staff is recommending that we look at this policy uh, for discussion as well, so. Council Kirby?
Thank you, I think we're still at that point where it is now that we look at the bylaw. I think um. It's hard in a community like this when you're, when you're, when you're, when the, the, the people that are, have the variances are, are, that you've known for all the time, this takes. When you have a bylaw, that takes the pressure off us, making a, a, a decision because I want to see them have it. It is nearly double what is allowed in our bylaws right now. And I think that is something that we've really got to look at, we've had small variances, but nothing quite like this one. So this is gonna set a huge precedent. And, 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 and that's just what I think is that we revisit this and we look at our bylaws before we make a decision quite like this.
Councilor Howe?
I, I too am concerned about the precedent that it, it will set as well and I agree with you, there is some concern to be labeled to that as well. Um, but what, when I, you know, and I don't look at the individual, I look at the circumstances and I look at. Where this house is, I've stepped in the guy's backyard, I've looked at where the other homes are located, there's not gonna block anybody else's view. Those are the things that I think take in place in development permit and I'm, that's where. If somebody wanted to do it down on, on, uh, in the middle of Peace River Crescent where they're blocking everybody else's view. That's our opportunity to say, hey, you know what, we're not good with where it is there. You know, this guy was able to do it because of where his location is and so although precedent may be set, it's his location because it's not affecting anyone else. Nineteen people had, had letters sent to him and didn't change anything, so we can give it to him, but we can't give it to you. And I could stand here as a counselor and stand up for that anytime, because the circumstances based on this one should be legit.
Yep, I agree and, and, and council, we, we do need to keep in mind development variance permits are one-offs. And um, you know, to be honest with you, I, I was against this when this first came across our desk, um, but. After the public hearing, uh, that definitely swayed my vote on that. Um, this is a, um, a unique circumstance as well, so, Council Norbury?
Yeah, I, I, um, the only part that I'd like to discuss is the, the precedent. You know, we're not locked into anything if, if a decision is made on these variances, that's what variances are made for. And, you know, I think we'd be doing a disservice to the community if every time something came up. That um, we thought, oh, this is setting a precedent, well, we don't have to follow these variances.
No.
And because that's what the, the variances are for.
That's right. Absolutely, yeah. Any other comment? Okay, uh, uh, we'll call it question. On the motion, all in favor? Opposed? Carried, thank you. Nine point six and a half, Tumbler Ridge Community Forest Corporation Council Resolutions. A report from the Director of Corporate Services dated August twelfth, twenty nineteen. To seek required council resolutions for the acceptance of financial statements, appointment of directors and the appointment of KPMG auditions, auditing services. Um, I'd like to move that the financial statements of the Tumbler Ridge Community Forest Corporation, the company. For the financial year ending December thirty-first, twenty seventeen be accepted. And that the following persons having consented in writing to act as directors of the Tumbler Ridge Community Forest Corporation. Be elected directors of the company to hold office until the next annual general meeting of the company or until sooner ceasing to hold office. Rob Mackay, Douglas Beal, Marcia R. DeFrain, Jonathan Howe, Alan Kangus, Chris Norbury and Stacy LaGenes. And that the appointment of KPMG as auditor of the company for the fiscal year of twenty eighteen of the Tumbler Ridge Community Forest Corporation be endorsed. Seconder, please, Council Lehman, discussion? Councilor Howe?
So we, we have to legally do this because the District of Tumbler Ridge is the sole shareholder of the community forest, correct?
I believe that's correct, yes. Any other discussion, comment? Okay, called a question, all in favor? Opposed? Carried. Did we recognize that, opposed? Yeah, okay. Uh, recommendation number two, that the financial statements of the Tumbler Ridge Community Forest Corporation, the company for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty eighteen be accepted. That the following persons have consented in writing to act as directors of the Tumbler Ridge Community Forest Corporation. Be elected directors of the company to hold office until the next annual general meeting of the company or until sooner ceasing to hold office. Rob Mackay, Doug Beal, Marcia R. DeFrain, Jonathan Howe, Alan Kangus, Chris Norbury and Stacy LaGenes. And that the appointment of KPMG is auditor of the company for the fiscal year of twenty nineteen of the Tumbler Ridge Community Forest Corporation be endorsed. Seconder? Council Kirby, any discussion? Called a question, all in favor? Opposed? Carried, thank you. Nine point seven and a half, split assessment process, a report from the Chief Administrative Officer dated August twelfth, twenty nineteen. To update council on information requested in regards to dual property tax areas. Mr. Wall, would you be able to give us a bit of a summary on this report, please?
Uh, yes, uh, so this was requested by council in consideration of whether or not a business is receiving an unfair advantage by being allowed to. Stay within their own residence and operate and whether or not. Those businesses, specifically the dentist offices being assessed at a business rate on their. Uh, business portion of their property and so in this report it breaks down and it kind of shows that whether or not. These properties are being split assessed. With business and both residential classes doesn't make very much of a difference on the benefit that they receive, you know, on an average house, you're probably looking at somewhere between one to three hundred dollars. Uh, advantage if you don't get the split assessment versus not having to pay for rent in the downtown core. I think it's pretty safe to put that number around thirty thousand, so it's not, uh, it's not really meaningful in the overall calculation for council. Um, I did find out that the dentist's property was not uh, dual assessed by BC Assessment, BC Assessment is aware of the property in the business. Uh, they have a number of criteria that they need to see before they will. Do this split assessment, that's ten thousand dollars improvement value to the property, significant use of the property, clearly segregated, segregated from the home. And a predominant use of this uh, of business portion be in operation for a large portion of the year. Why specifically BC Assessment has made the choice on this one, I can tell you they won't tell us. Um, again, I can tell you they are aware of the property there, if council continues like you have provided with the six month. Uh, whether or not PC Assessment will change their mind has been re-updated with them. I would say it's probably a good indication to look at their decisions of the past to see what they're going to do in the future. It's important for council to remember you have absolutely no control over that, this is outside of council's authority. And again, when it comes to is this property or other properties in general gaining advantage by not having that split assessment? Not compared to the advantage they have from not going into the downtown core.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, I think it's very useful information for sure. Uh, recommendation please? Councilor Howe?
Just had a little, another question, we'd love to discuss it.
Uh, yeah, you can move for discussion, sure. Seconder, Council Kalka, all in favor? Carried, thank you.
So, and, and again, Mr. Wall, I didn't get a chance to reply to your email because it's late in the day for me, but uh. The part that I don't quite understand is the improvements on the Legion, so. Are we saying that the value of the building of the Legion is only twelve thousand seven hundred dollars? Is that what this report says, adding the ninety-one and the thirty-six hundred dollars together?
Mr. Wall?
That's what, that's not what I'm saying, but that is what the DC Assessment does.
Okay, any other comment or discussion? Okay, moving on to nine point eight five, travel expense policy amendments, TR zero-two and EO zero-five. Report from the Director of Corporate Services dated August twelfth, twenty nineteen. To seek approval of amending District of Tumbler Ridge travel policy TR zero-two and council expense, expense policy E zero, EO zero-five. Recommendation please, Council Norbury?
That the travel expense policy for TR dash O-two for the District of Tumbler Ridge be approved and adopted as presented in the attached draft document. And that council expense policy EO dash zero-five for the District of Tumbler Ridge be approved and adopted as presented in the attached draft document.
Seconder, Council Majinsky, any discussion? Councilor Howe?
Page one-ten, uh, one fifty-three. I don't quite understand the wording uh, in the first paragraph, it's in red. Uh, I've given Mr. Wall a heads up on this one that I don't quite understand it, it's not clear to me, would be clear to our uh. Next council or employees and the reason I say that is it says travel time outside regular working hours exceeds two and a half hours, is that in one trip going out? Or is that in the combined amount of travel, whereas it says the combined trip is four hours to Fort St. John, three hours to Dawson and Chetwin is two? So like, if I travel, if I left Tumbler Ridge at seven in the morning, my regular working hours are what for the district, eight? So for the first hour I'm traveling um, outside of my regular working time. Or for an hour and a half to get to there, so I get there at eight-thirty, half hours on my time. I do a four-hour meeting, I come back during my regular time. Is that a combined amount of the travel time?
Mr. Wall?
So it's just the tra, the time that you are out of the community. That are not within your working hours, so what you described there was you left the community at seven o'clock? Yeah. And then you're back in the community before your workday ends?
Yes.
The only thing you'd be entitled to in that case would be your lunch. If you left the community at seven o'clock and came back. If you left the community at seven o'clock and came back an hour and a half after. Your shift normally ends, then you would be entitled to your lunch plus. Twenty five dollars in this policy. And this is where this is really addressing the people who are asking for breakfast, lunch and dinner when you were out of the community. Hour on on your shift or two hours on your shift and saying no and realizing, well, it wasn't really fair in some cases to say no to. Breakfast and dinner and one of them kind of made sense and so this is.
Showing clear guidelines, yeah, councillor Norbury?
Yeah, I'd like to speak in support of both the motions firstly with um you know, the we're talking about the uh the additional. Travel allowance for for food and I think that sort of makes sense if somebody is, I think if you're. You we can reasonably expect our employees to, you know, bring bring lunch with them, you know, on during, if they were meant to work that day. They they would have a reasonable. Let me try that again, I think that if we're asking employees to work two and a half hours longer than their scheduled shift, that. Um the meal that they would have to buy, you know, while on the road, wouldn't be something they'd be normally expected to. Provide while they're at work, so I think the additional funds is appropriate in that regard, um and. Moving on to E O dash five, maybe I should, maybe I'll just stop at the one and come back at the second.
You're in favor, that's what you said, okay.
Trying to cut it down.
Councillor Kirby?
Thank you, Mayor Mayor Bertrand, um can I get confirmation from Mister Wall that. We're moving from the point five four kilometers uh or per kilometers cents uh to fifty eight cents per kilometer? This is what the regional district is going under and also. They have a file, like I'm I'm looking at what the regional district provides and when you're when you're traveling. They also have an allowance for internet and for phone. Now that's should be something that we consider, it's it's twenty five dollars per month for internet. And forty six for phone, just I'm just wondering if that's something we should look at because nowadays. Those are big expenses for all of us who are out of town at conferences.
Yeah, I agree, I mean, I think that's something that possibly uh could be addressed uh in. An upcoming item in the agenda, possibly?
And that's why I'm bringing it up now, if that upcoming issue in the agenda is defeated, then where does this go?
Well.
I'm I'm just asking like. This is, well then it can come up, I guess, in a notice of motion later, but.
Another amendment, yeah. Councillor Kukalka?
There's a draft document, so I can't even change it this time, if that's something this, the council as a whole says, yeah, we should have for allowances. That's this is this is our, I mean, policy is being drafted. Reason to me, we're, I mean, I don't know, we took for another my agenda, this is something the council wants to put a motion on, it's more change or added. Wouldn't that be fair to do at this time?
This isn't a draft of the policy, this is an amendments of to the policy, right? So we could, Mister Wall, a notice of motion or or amendments right now to the policy, Mister Wall?
Whatever you want to do, um if the council is comfortable in making that change right now, you could make that change right now. If council wants to uh send this back with those options and I think. I'd be cautious right now of of council making that change today because you're gonna have to come up with the amounts and the structure and how it's going to work. So if council wants to add that in there, I would just kick it back to staff and say. Um you know, we we like what's in here, if you do, you know, we like what's in here, please add this in and bring it back, uh that's certainly a way you can go about it.
Okay. Councillor Howe and councillor Norbury?
So this is to me is a travel expense policy, I don't think this has to do with the phone and internet because we have to use phone and internet. Uh to do this job, so I think that's part of the salary reiteration policy that should be added.
That's what I was.
Into this one here, although I agree with it, I know that you bring that up, I think that's a great idea. Uh it does, it is costly to to run phone and whatever, but. Uh I think we should just stick to the staff, uh travel expense policy for this one.
Good points, so councillor Kirby, councillor Norbury?
Sorry, councillor Alex, what I was gonna say.
Okay, very good. Councillor Kukalka?
Sorry, I I just read the second, maybe I misunderstood, I don't disagree with councillor Howe. That that the T R travels, the travel expense policy, T R zero two. And then the council expense policy, E O zero five, expense policy. It's on a new trial, I mean, my trial might be our expense policy, but it's an expense policy. I mean, a phone or whatever could be added to our expenses, not to my wage, this is an expense.
Correct.
That's how it is, it's spent on the travel policy. Council.
Do we want to separate these motions, possibly? Councillor Kukalka?
Yeah, I'm not sure, dude, I'd like to see it's vote on one. At top, because maybe we, I mean, I have, I I went through it, I'm wishing in regards to the T R. Dash zero two policy that that staff's come up with. With councillor Kirby's comments, I might suggest that maybe that motion should be to send it back to staff to. To maybe look over the piece and see what other municipalities are doing.
Okay. Okay, so if if we want to separate them, I guess we're gonna have to defeat the motion on the table, no?
Then with the with the request to.
Go ahead.
With the request to separate motions, the chair has to make a determination, can these motions be reasonably separated? I would advise you in this instance, clearly it's two different policies, can you easily be separated at that point? They're just separated, you need to move on with them as singular motion, so the first motion is on the table, which is the T R zero two.
Yep.
Uh and deal with that and then after that.
Very good, thank you, councillor Kirby?
Just a clarification, is it fifty eight cents now per kilometer?
Oh, sorry.
Than the fifty four, I I we didn't, I didn't know which it is.
C R A right now is fifty eight cents per kilometer. And one of the benefits of doing it this way is that we don't have to update the policy all the time, we're just gonna match C R A, so the P R. Our E has fifty eight cents because that's what the C R A is.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're just marrying it to the C R A, if they make any changes, it's already done, yeah. Okay, so um called a question on the first. Motion that the travel expense policy T R zero two. Um be adopted as presented? Uh all in favor? Carry, thank you. Second part of the motion, the council expense policy E O zero five be adopted as presented. Secondary, no, sorry. For me, sorry. Uh no, I was gonna call the question. But if we want to send it back to staff, that's acceptable too, correct? Is that what the will of council is to send this back? Councillor Norbury?
I I think that um this this policy in its current is sufficient for groundwork. And then we can we can add to it as we go on, you know, I'd hate to see um progress in a policy be held up. Because we don't like one thing in, I think we should accept the framework and um add make changes or even make changes at this point in time.
Councillor Kukalka?
Yeah, when we make changes this time, I won't support it, it's like this, I mean councillor made a good comment. You know, whether it's we have expenses for for cell phone use or whatever that number is, I'd like to send it back to staff because it gives them the opportunity. We throw the number out there and maybe we're we're way off the bench, when we send it back to staff, you let let them do. Their investigation, come back and and with that number, it's in our, it's in that policy. Instead of us just trying to decide how much a phone's worth or.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think there's.
I won't support it for to go through.
Councillor Howe?
So the way the policy reads in the current form, the way councillor Norbury has just said, it can it could go through like this. If we decide through our salary reiteration policy, if it passes, you may want uh somebody to. Then those people tell you how much you should get for a cell phone and internet and give them more to work with. And if they say, yeah, you guys should get paid for a cell phone and internet, allow them to come back with an amount. Rather than staff come back and say you should get fifty five, if we're gonna do it for our wages. To send it out to a committee, that's what we've now this, if we decide that, why should that committee not also be granted the opportunity to say, hey? We should get twenty five bucks or fifty or whatever they say for your cell phone and and for twenty for internet or whatever.
Yeah.
Give them, if we're gonna elect townspeople and somebody take this on, give them more to work with.
I think that's that's definitely part of it, um and that's was my thinking originally when when councillor Kirby.
Come back and we can change this?
Yep, yeah, no, I agree, councillor Kirby?
Thank you, uh and those numbers are going off what the regional district is doing, so twenty five dollars per month for internet, forty doll- forty six max per month for phone. We've been using these phones for years on council and we're not getting, you know, anything back from it, it's time that it should be included. It really should, we don't, we don't have a separate council phone. And half of the stuff you're doing is online or with your phone, so. It should be looked at for sure.
Would you like to make a motion?
Sure, well.
Yeah, I guess the motion to adopt is is on the table, sorry, sorry councillor Kirby, councillor Kukalka?
Yeah, yeah, and I and I see councillor Howe's uh perspective and again, I won't support the motion on the floor, I was like, well, they should go back to staff. Um that's why we have staff and I must say in the townspeople, if a committee is true, is is put it together and and voted and approved by council. I think this is a staff thing, not residents come up, whether it's superiority, so I won't support it, I think it should go back to staff, the motion isn't, so I'll make another.
Okay, any other comment? Okay, called a question on the motion to adopt policy E O zero five, all in favor? Opposed? Believe that carried then, did anybody catch that? Carried?
Probably want to do that again.
Yeah, that's one more time, all in favor of the motion? Okay, opposed? Carried, thank you. Alright, nine point nine five, C A O Performance Review Policy, pers twenty five. Bit from the May twenty first, twenty nineteen closed council meeting for formal adoption, recommendation, please. Councillor Kukalka?
The council adopts the C O, C A O Performance Review Process Policy, pers twenty five, that's presented.
Secondary? Councillor Norbury, any discussion? Councillor Howe?
Just refresh my memory, did we have any? Alternate ways of doing this?
Um Mister Wall explained to me last, was it last term that there was uh in-person meetings of some sort, Mister Wall, can you elaborate?
The previous term had one, the previous council started out with one informal review and then an informal review. Throughout the year and then changed to two formal reviews and that's the policy here. The only change that's uh he in here from what council saw before, which was approved in uh closed for. Just uh to start to use in the midterm was to remove a section out of it that wasn't being used anyway, so this is not to change, but there's. If they, if you're asking the question, is there other ways to do the performance review?
Multiple.
As many as you want envisioned.
Yep, councillor Howe?
And I I just uh, we we just went very careful. We talked about the performance review or what that that?
Not specific.
Okay, well, we just went through a performance review.
Process, yes.
There were some instances in there that I found a lot of council felt like. We couldn't provide good input to because we didn't know of the day-to-day in and out workings that Mister Wall has, particularly with his staff. Were asked to comment on staff development. Do we really know about staff development and and that's where I say, is there another way to look at this or is there another? Like could you, could we have not had three or four different types of packages of evaluations that see which one you like and which one you didn't? Uh to me, this just seems like old hat, it seems like the same thing we repeat, repeat, repeat and the same things come up again, we look at it and we go, you know, I don't. I don't know how how good he is at the the delegation of work, like, but we make a rating on that that affects his. His uh his overall score, so you know, and now that we've gone through it, this this was previous, this was made, we did this, right? I don't, I just, maybe it would be time to look at three or four different options. And and in a closed session, we look at, we decide what we think is a better way to evaluate Mister Wall on what we see. From these seats rather than what we perceive is happening. I I I don't know, I just, food for thought.
Councillor Norbury?
Now, speaking speaking to the motion, um this was something that we uh agreed on to to make a change in the future. As it is a better developmental tool for our employee and that's why this change is put in front of us so that it can be adopted moving forward. Um you know, councillor Howe makes good points and I believe we should have a discussion um when it comes to the next review time. But uh at this point in time, you know, I'm in support of it.
Okay, any other comment? I agree with you councillor Howe, I I think it can be revisited to to see the validity of each question, sure. Um but then also council does have the option to, if if you don't believe that you're able to answer the question. Just don't answer it too as well, right? And then maybe if there is an opportunity or if there is a review where we don't have any comments on one section, then. It kind of shows us that uh, because he each councillor and myself have different relationships with uh our C A O, so. Um you know, I going through that as well, I I went through it and and uh. I was able to answer most of the questions, but a lot of them was on appearance, for example, um staff development or. Or some of those questions, it was on appearance, I didn't do any research in regards to it, so. Yeah, I think we can definitely have a look at it and and uh see if there is areas to improve for sure. I think the whole purpose of the performance review is to improve, um so, yeah, well, it'd be beneficial. Councillor Kukalka?
So my question, I listened to to you, you worship councillor Howe, kinda agree on some of the comments that may be listed in here and I did the evaluation. And that's fine, but I did hear from other councillors and same thing, they're like, oh, how do you, like, is that on me and how he delegates work from me? So maybe before we approve this, because that's approved, this is what we're filling out here, so maybe we need to look at that before we approve it. If cal- majority council says, geez, you know, how do I know if he's delegating, how do I know what his relationship, I know what his relationship building is with himself? But staff develop, same thing, I mean, I know I see someone, I mean, there's an email we all received who was related, decided to take the same CFO job. So, but it is true, we're thinking, I just listened to your comments, if that's the case, should we not do it before we approve this one? To talk about to prove a second one?
Yeah, well, I in my perspective, going through it twice, um I I do see areas of improvements. Um not only in the report, but also in the presentation of it, I think um I erred. Um at the beginning of of the process and not sitting all of us down and and really um. Uh going through the report, um and and so that everyone has a clear understanding of what questions that are being asked of them. Um I I think there's rooms of for improvement there, but I think uh the template of the report is is beneficial as well. Councillor Norbury?
Yeah, so if we don't approve this, all that happens is that we keep the old one that we know is even worse, right? Like as 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 presented by um, you know, our employee saying it's not useful, so. Adopt approving this or not approving this doesn't um, I think by not approving this, we only get a. We lose a benefit, right, and I agree that moving forward that we should relook at this, but moving down the line for other councils, if this isn't changed. This this better tool for um. Review, review is um.
Councillor Howe?
Uh councillor Norbury makes a good point there, that if we go back to a worse system than what we had. But perhaps the idea here is that council is agreeable to it, is that we ask five different municipalities. For how they do a C A O evaluation, we have five different copies of what they look like and we decide, you know, this makes sense and. Why would, why are we even talking about leadership that has nothing to do or or whatever, when you see what five other communities would do? We could make that motion right after this, I if, you know.
I I.
I'm not happy with this, I don't like the way this has ever been set up, but.
Yeah, I think that would be uh definitely appropriate for a motion afterwards. Councillor Kirby?
Kirby? Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I I myself am really not a fan of the way this is set out, I don't feel like at the end of it, like. You can comment, you 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 gave the um overall performance review to Mister Wall, I didn't get feedback. So I like to know like when I'd, I think it's happened in the past and correct me if I'm wrong, is that. The C O C A O could self-evaluate themselves and they can give. Give areas where, you know, where they think they're doing good, where they need help, because at the end of the day, this is to make sure. That our C A O is getting clear direction and we're making his job easier and our communications easier and everything easier for. The municipality, so I find this is not really something that I like personally. And 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 if Mister Wall likes it, then I I guess that's good, but I'm not getting the information I need back. On how the review was for him or or how we can do, you know, just the questions, some of the questions I agree with, I I I think I I can't answer it. But not being able to answer that, is that something that we have to work on, I should, do I need to know exactly this, you know, that's where my job is. Are we doing our jobs well, are we getting the right information back, I don't, that's just.
Can I answer that?
So just on uh this, the council, councillor Norbury, we're we're gonna have to use the old one, we don't start this process till November first. In 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 regards to the CEO is gonna be provided. In, 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 in regards to the CEO is going to be provided feedback, not to fish until I start filling this out till November twentieth. We have two months for, you know, for Mr. Wall, maybe the word, like, I mean, I.
I'd like to hear from him if, if he may, I mean, what's he thinking about, I mean?
This is about him, what about me?
Mr. Wall?
Uh, just for one thing, so council, you made a motion to use this form already. At that time, for this year, this is what has been set, and I would say it's, it's not fair to change the rules of the game a month before the evaluation comes through. So as far as making changes to the evaluation going into next year, I think we've got plenty of time to get that done, and council can make the changes. I would say this, that you may be too focused on the scoring parts of the evaluation, which is the front where you get to put the comments, and there's a lot of focus that could be placed on the setting of goals, and I think that may be one of the reasons why council has been frustrated throughout these processes, because you get to it and at the end of the year and you're making comments, and you go, well, this doesn't actually allow me to make changes moving forward. And again, it's that focus on the scoring section of it which takes up the first two pages rather than focusing on the goal setting, which is the last page, and I think moving forward, um, I, I would echo the same things that, that you have said, I don't feel I get great direction out of these performance reviews, I think it's very mixed because it's a comment on what was going on in the past, and then the areas where we focus on what we should be doing in the future aren't, um, aren't wrestled with, right, and they're kind of left up in the air, and a different form may help that, a different focus when we're going through it may help it, uh, but I would say that tho- those two things is that, one, this, this has been set, and this is just to put it in the policy. Whether or not you defeat this, the form that's going to be used at the end of the year is already, place council's already decided that. And if you don't like this form, just defeat this, we go up, we find some different forms, and we can try and figure out how can we make this a process that, um, people aren't frustrated with at the end of the day.
Okay, and, um, would you be open to a self-evaluation?
It's top.
I, I would like to echo the benefit of that, I think that is a benefit for us as well. I know a lot of people don't like to rate themselves, and, and I'm one of them, but, uh, I, I do see it as a benefit for sure, so. Uh, okay, so we'll call the question on this recommendation. All in favor? Opposed? Defeated, thank you. Motion, Council How?
I can put a motion on the floor that we, uh, direct staff to, uh, amass five other CAO eval, excuse me, CAO Performance Review Packages from neighboring communities.
Okay, secondary? Council Kalkka, Mr. Wall?
Can I expand beyond neighboring, I know a number of communities don't do them. Yes, I'm not going to be able to get five from Chigery.
Yep.
Yeah, that doesn't need to be an amendment, does it? I don't think.
Maybe just heads up, I, if it's not coming back from a town, I'll let you know, but I know regionally there are some that don't do them.
Right, okay. Alright, Council Kirby?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand, can I ask for a five-minute recess?
Uh, yeah, can we call the question here first?
Oh, yeah, I thought we did, okay, yep.
Uh, call the question on the motion, all in favor? Carried, thank you, I've been in a recess, please.
I need to stand up.
Legs?
Oh, my legs are rad. And I know the next two we might still be chatting.
So want to talk about the.
Norbury, Norbury didn't catch that right away, sorry here.
Wow, he's excellent, and then it's like, he's one excellent, right, like, if the scale is scarred, that's a double. I don't know, I just, if we maybe get three or four different. Does it, we might, St. John's works really good, or, we like this part of Chapman, but we don't like.
Nobody does, he does it.
Chapman does, Taylor, I'll have to check out, you come up with a, this one.
It is, it's the feeling.
The end of the day, it's your evaluation, right?
That's the thing, you can take it down. The thing is, if somebody hit. Or somebody. No. So, nobody said anything, nobody was against it. The thing is, if, if, I was going to build, everybody around would say no, and I would expect that. I wouldn't even attempt to build it.
Yeah.
But it, it's, you're in a different area there.
But see, that's a policy, and the bylaws that.
Oh, I know, but that's why you have areas too. And each one, like they said, is accepted, accepted, so you have to look at each one separately, I mean, you know, it's. It might, but that doesn't mean they're going to get approved, and that's the thing, you know, six hundred bucks.
That's true.
So.
To do that.
Yeah, so.
Might deter a few people.
Yeah.
Because if they get denied.
Because, I mean, there's nobody, there's not a chance anybody in the middle bench is going to get approved. I could see some people on the lower bench, like on the other side of Burj on getting approved, I can see that. And some people, no, because that's, so you're done, so uh, and as far as growing, no, because you're in the bank, so it's very limited to where.
Just a few up on upper bench, I guess, eh?
So many. Because there, think if you can't dig into it, we're going to have issues.
Further along by those cul-de-sacs that are put in place that are empty lots up there.
Oh, that's up there.
Whatever that is, like.
Yeah, that's Canuso and, yeah, but, uh, I think that would be.
We can set back already those homes on that properties. I'm just worried about that one as well, because it might be backlash after the fact is up.
I don't think so. No matter where the baby was gone, there would have been something coming back. We may get less if this goes through, actually it does go through, then it proves had. Yeah. You know. We have to learn. Things are changing. We couldn't build twenty-four by twenty-six, so I had to come here and do the, get that changed, and so we changed, I don't know why we picked twenty-four by twenty-six.
Weird number, weird number two, for fridge wise and building wise. Had it been the, the legal trust length at that time, or whatever, weight load, load rating or some bullshit.
No, it was just, I think that's the size that somebody wanted. And the thing is, with twenty-four foot, it's, it's a good size because it's three sheets of plywood, everything's easy. Uh, as far as the twenty-six, it's a little bit longer because that's, you know, you measure the length of the truck that these days with the extended cavity, and that's about what you need, if you put a bench in front of it. That gives you the roof, and that's kind of what.
How was the hockey school? Uh, by all accounts.
Sorry, sir.
Four?
All one electric.
Oh, that was good, you got me good there. Holy crap.
What'd you get him with?
The peak.
Chris, don't talk. Laugh was about to happen.
Joking, no. Let me, it's all good.
Sierra's going for, like, rolls, try a touch shorts. That's a, there's only fifteen, twelve, very obvious. He thought that's a huge step. I don't know if anybody would trip the hockey.
Careful.
Okay. Hygiene, well, hygiene, yeah, mine are hot, so. How's it work with, uh? Constantly, yes. Yeah, yeah, you start off.
Okay, callback to order. Uh, item nine point one five, snow clearing policy. Report from the Director of Operations and Infrastructure dated August twelfth, twenty nineteen to seek adoption of the snow clearing policy PW dash one five. Council Kalkka?
I'd like to be one of the alternators in that this idea, that this idea is deferred to the next policy is very.
Secondary? Council How, any discussion? Council Kalkka?
Yeah, so the reason I, I read the alter, the alternative, uh, recommendation is that there is some stuff that's missing that we talked about in regards to, before we started building that, one of them is sidewalk clearing, uh, in the school zone, as well as the roadways in the school zone, and early shifts to have that.
Yeah, and I think it would be beneficial to discuss, um, weekend coverage as well during that time as well, so. Council Lehman?
And, oh, thank you, Mayor, I'm also wondering about Murray, Willow, and Speaker not being.
On the priority.
On the priority.
Okay, call the question, all in favor? Opposed? Carried, thank you. Nine point one one five, Residence Committee on Council Remuneration. A report from the Chief Administrative Officer dated August twelfth, twenty nineteen to provide council with a draft term of reference for a Residence Committee on Council Remuneration. Uh, I think we have three recommendations there, and I'd like to separate them into separate motions, please. Council Kalkka?
Two or three, that's what.
Uh, three, please.
Council adopted terms of reference for the Residence Committee on Council Remuneration as attached.
Secondary? Council Norbury, open for discussion. Okay, call the question, all in favor? Opposed? Uh, I believe that carried. Carried, thank you. Second motion, Council Kalkka?
That former mayor and councillor Mike Kasey be appointed to the committee?
Secondary? Council Norbury, open for discussion, Council Kirby?
Um, I will be voting against this as, as a majority, but I'm, like, I have been against it from the start. I'm not actually against Mike being appointed, but I'll still be voting in the nick.
Council Kalkka?
And I know Council How, I believe it was you that sent the email to, uh, Mr. Wall in regards to if Mr. Kasey was, uh, contacted, and I believe that, uh, the answer back from Mr. Wall that he was, and it sounded like he'd be interested. All the Korean recommendations.
Council How?
And I echo Council Kirby's concerns as well, I have nothing against, uh, uh, Mike Kasey, but, uh, cannot support the recommendation, so.
Okay, Council Norbury?
Um, I guess to, to say, um, that I do support, um, this process, and I think my, uh, Mike Kasey is a perfect person to, uh, be appointed to this committee because he can see it from both the mayor, the councillors, and the residents.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, call the question, all in favor? Opposed? I believe that carried as well, okay?
Just to mention, on these, on these close votes, council, please put your hand up, we're playing dangerous games with these votes right here.
Yeah, hard to keep track, I agree. Um, third motion, Council Norbury?
So before I bring up the motion, I'd like to point out that, you know, a councillor doesn't, isn't required to raise their hand, and I think it's inappropriate that we force people to raise their hands.
Good point, Council Kalkka?
That a public call for obfuscation to participate, the committee be released with a response date ending August thirty-first, twenty nineteen.
Secondary, Council Lehman, open for discussion. Okay, call the question, all in favor? Opposed? Carried, thank you. Nine point one two five, travel request. Uh, gala honoring Mayor Laurie Ackerman. Report from the HR Secretary dated August twelfth, twenty nineteen. Seek approval for Mayor Bertrand to attend the Canadian Energy Person of the Year Gala honoring Mayor Laurie Ackerman in Calgary on October ninth, twenty nineteen. So just a bit of background on that, um, I sit with Mayor Ackerman on our Resource Coalition, um, Municipality's Coalition, and, um, did receive an invite, a special invite from her for this gala. Council Kalkka?
Please put the recommendation on the floor before we get into the debate, and that. The council perused the travel expenses to Mayor Bertrand to attend the Canadian Energy Person of the Year Gala honoring Mayor, Mayor Laurie Ackerman in Calgary on October ninth, twenty nineteen.
Secondary, Council Majinsky, open for discussion, Council Kalkka?
Yeah, I, I will fully support this, and the reason I do that is, um, one is, this is a mayor from our own area. I mean, you may sit with her on the PRD and other things, but this, uh, mayor has also contributed to Tombridge immensely. Um, I think we need to show support, that we support her as well and her city. Uh, we constantly ask them to support our museum or our geopark, or whatever else we're doing, and I think that we should still show support when somebody like that is getting awarded, and that is, uh, something that's very, uh, honored to see come to this region, and to Mayor Laurie Ackerman.
Couldn't agree more, uh, it's a very prestigious award and, and, uh, very well-deserving, she, she, uh, puts her heart and soul into that position, uh, and I would, I would definitely be, uh, honored to support as well. Council How?
Do you, um, do you have any recollection of how the, uh, funding for the Tombridge Museum, Geopark went through the PRD for St. John? How did it go?
Uh, with Fort St. John as far as the regional district went?
Yes, supporting the stuff, remember we had the big list out there of supporting what?
Yep, so they, um, contributed. So they didn't contribute to any economic development initiative through the regional district, uh, because they budgeted it through their own municipal, um, budget. Um, but in further, um, negotiations during that process, there was, um, realization that there was surplus by each community, um, that had surplus for the year. So, uh, I got the ball rolling on allocating the surpluses towards these initiatives, and Fort St. John, um, contributed, I believe, twenty thousand to the geopark, I believe. So, yes, they did contribute again this year. Council Kalkka?
Yeah, and I'm going to just make a few comments there, I mean, I guess I was, I was there when someone went down the PRD, and I've contributed in conversation with, uh, Mayor Laurie Ackerman at other functions, and, uh, they actually are coming to Tombridge in September to tour our museum and to tour the geopark, whether it's on hikes or not, and that is because if they are going to do any more funding to our museum or to our geopark, they want it coming from the city's budget, not through the PRD where their taxpayers are getting the pat on the back for supporting us, if their council so decides to fund these organizations. And I think that's, that's what you're going to see in their twenty twenty, whether they support it or not, no idea till then, but they want to see it come from their budgets, so their residents get the, the pat on the back from these organizations within our spell.
Excuse me, Council Kirby?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand, uh, I think Mayor Ackerman has gone over and beyond her role as mayor to, to boost the awareness of the energy crises that happen out here, and she is, she has really been an advocate for the whole area, and I'd like to see her when she goes down there to receive the award, have our area there cheering her on, I think it's great. Also, um, at the coal form, she will be here at the coal form, it'd be nice to, is, to maybe do a little presentation for those of us councillors, you know, that won't be attending the gala but still have a, give her some recognition there as well.
Hundred percent, yeah, she's actually, uh, going to participate in, in a couple of, um, talks there, so it's, it's well-appreciated. Okay, call the question on the motion, all in favor? Carried, thank you. There is another, um, angle to this as well, I, I could possibly, if council wishes, take the, uh, Dino Mobile down to Calgary, I don't know if it's ever been down there, so that is another option as well, possibly to save costs, so. Okay, thank you. Um, nine point one three five, schedule of meetings. So we have a meeting scheduled for this month, twenty-sixth. This was, um, a special council meeting added by staff, uh, at the request of council to add additional meetings. But speaking with Mr. Wall, we are actually getting caught up now. Um, tonight is a big agenda, but we're, we're getting through the workload, and he doesn't feel that the meeting on the twenty-sixth will have anything available, is that correct, Mr. Wall? Okay, so I'd like to propose that we, uh, cancel the meeting on the twenty-sixth. Council Kirby?
Second.
Okay, all in, sorry, Council Kalka?
Yeah, I will support that, the reason I did is, we have these reasons for a reason. Yeah, I will support that. The reason I did is we have these reasons for a reason. I have a hard time believing that we already know on the twelfth that there's nothing. I mean, especially council meeting, you know, maybe that's where the snow clearing comes up. I'm I'm sorry, I I, you know, again, late, enough hours, we could have split some of this stuff up for the twenty sixth.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, call the question on the motion, all in favor? Opposed? Carry, thank you. Any other items that stick out for council on the schedule? Okay. Item ten, notice of motion, Counselor Norbury?
As per the recommendation from the Building Health and Communities Committee, that the District of Tumbridge support an annual health briefing in Tumbridge.
Okay, cool. Any other notice of motions? Okay, sorry, Counsel Howard?
Put a motion on the floor that all grant or community support. Uh, money is recommended by the community for us be reviewed by staff and council prior to being released. To ensure that any money being given out is in line with the wishes of the elected council. And has been reviewed by staff to ensure that any projects or grants are in line with currently going on within the District of Tumbridge.
Okay, secondar? Oh, sorry, yeah, correct, sorry, my fault. Okay, any others? Okay, moving on to councilors' business. Uh, eleven point one, Counsel Kalka, thank you for those reports. And Counsel Norbury as well, thank you. Any other councilor business? Counsel Norbury?
Yeah, so I'd like to bring up an issue that has been brought to my attention by a few members of the community um that I've had to deal with and that's issues with our. That issues with our pool. Um, you know, I've definitely advocated on behalf of our staff that uh. There's a lot of external factors that we can't um, can't. It's out of our control, you know, in in that um, you know, people get sick, they're on, they're on leave and it's it is a high requirement for these uh lifeguards to be in place to make sure people are safe. And I think that staff made the right decision in in terms of keeping a service level. That is acceptable to our community, yet um. I'd still like to make aware that people are still upset and after speaking with Mr. Wall, we found, I think, a reasonable solution for people who are upset and that. If if they bought these passes to the pool under the expectation of a certain level of service, they can pause it until that service, level of service is resumed.
Okay, yeah, I know um the the issue with the pool and and the lack of lifeguards is is definitely an issue that snuck up on us and um. Uh, we all understand how important that pool is uh as a service to our community and it's it's well used, so. Um, strategies are in place now to to try and prevent that and and hopefully we can correct the situation as soon as possible. Okay, any other councillor business? Um, just on on my end, I had a good meeting with uh Argo Roads today. Um, that are our new maintenance contractor for the South Peace. Um, brings lots of experience from uh the Okanagan area. And uh looking forward to working collaboratively with collaboratively with them. And um council had the opportunity to uh voice some of our concerns with our neighboring roads and 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 also. Express some of our priorities that we're looking for in the area, so I thought it was a very productive meeting. And uh it's great to see an face as well. Uh, okay, moving on, question, answer period. Any questions from the gallery? Doesn't look like it. So, uh, moving on to thirteen point one, sorry, resolution to close meeting. Recommendation that the meeting is closed to the public in accordance with the Community Charter, section one dash. Section ninety dash one subsection G as follows. Litigation or potential litigation affecting the municipality. Secondar? Counsel Lehman, all in favor? Opposed? Carry, thank you.